Make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
You look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 211. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, a new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice.
We are opening the July 22 Board of Supervisors meeting, calling the meeting to order. And Cory, would you lead us in the pledge, please? All right, thank you. So Madam Clerk, are there any corrections or deletions to the agenda?
Thank you, Chair Hall. At the request of the Board, Agenda Item Number 27, that's SR-25-1940, is pulled from the agenda and will not be heard today.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to say that again very clearly. This is an item that we've received a number of comments on. It's SR-25-1940. It's the one to introduce and waive further reading on an ordinance to repeal and replace Chapter 2 of Title 2 of the Nevada County Code to align elections for the offices of the Assessor, Auditor, Controller, Clerk, Recorder, and Elections Official and the Treasure Tax Collector with the Presidential Primary. We're not going to be hearing that item today. At this point, there are no plans to bring it back. So if you're here waiting for comment or if you know someone's coming in for comment on that, please feel free to share that with them so they don't have to come down. All right, great. Any other corrections or deletions?
Not that I'm aware of, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So then we're going to go into the Consent Calendar. These items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. We'll act upon them at one time without discussion. Any Board member can request that an item be removed for discussion. Consent Calendar this morning, Items 1 through 16. And we'll take public comment in a minute. And if you want to call in, please start calling in now. Is there any public comment on items on the consent or request to remove any items from the consent? No public comment here in the chambers. Any callers?
There's no callers, Chair.
Okay, great. We will close public comment. Any Board members want to pull an item from consent? No, great. So I'm going to look for a motion to approve the Consent Calendar. So moved. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
District 1.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, so we're moving into Item 17. Sorry. Did not mean to skip over public comment. We are moving into public comment. All right, so again, if you're willing to provide public comment and you want to call in, please begin calling in. Members of public shall be allowed to address the Board on items not appearing on today's agenda that are of interest to the public. Please direct your comments to the Board, not the audience or staff. No individual may speak more than once, and each speaker will be given three minutes. All right, we're opening up public comment. Go ahead.
Dawn? Okay. Shirley Osgood from District 3. And once again, I'd like to thank you for your attention. As you probably are aware, genocide continues to be ongoing against the people of Palestine, Gaza. Some of you may think this is an irrelevant issue to this group. I don't agree. Having watched tens of thousands of people die, way exceeding the number of Vietnam veterans that died in the Vietnam War, I'm very disturbed that this is happening with my tax dollars. And as of May, there have been dozens of mass casualty events since the so-called Israel-US humanitarian aid debacle was created. It's a sadistic death trap. I think it is the responsibility of every elected official and every individual in the United States of America to be speaking out against this. You probably have your reasons. I do not know what they are, but I could come up with a list of at least 10 why you are not willing or not speaking out. But I would encourage you to say as a group that we support ceasefire and a weapons embargo, that we do not want our tax dollars going for this genocide. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley.
Good morning. I'm Jeffrey Gottesman from Jewish Voice for Peace and the Peace and Justice Center of Nevada County. And I'm here also to urge you to place a ceasefire and weapons embargo resolution on your agenda. You know, we're all here enjoying our beautiful Nevada County summer, having barbecues with our grandchildren and children, and going to music festivals, living the good life. In the meantime, $30 billion of our taxes have gone to arming and protecting in the international legal arena. The apocalypse that's going on now in Gaza, where 2 million people, almost all civilians, are being starved to death methodically as a way to try to ethnically cleanse them and eliminate them. I know that, you know, there are few brave people in our government who are speaking out against this from surprisingly different perspectives. You not only have Rashida Tlaib and Elon and Ilhan Omar on calling for a halt to weapons shipments, but you also have people like Thomas Massey and Marjorie Taylor Greene saying enough. We are standing up. We don't care if the foreign lobby that's going to fund our opponents in our next election is so loaded with money that they're going to be able to swamp us like they did with Jamal Bowman and Cori Bush. And I know that as elected officials, you're under a lot of pressure. And I think that the time has come to think about what you're going to say to yourself when you look at yourself in the mirror and after this is all over, after 2 million Palestinians have been starved to death, and ask yourself what you could have done to stop it. Right now, our money is going to arm gangs right across the border in Gaza that are preventing the hundreds and thousands of trucks lining up with humanitarian aid from getting in. And when they do get in, they steal it. And then they warehouse it and sell it at exorbitant prices on the black market. Please think about a resolution.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Good morning. My name is Robert Marcasi, and I'd like to say the world is not a very pleasant place at times. But I think a resolution against generally all killing of innocent women and children is not politically incorrect and does not create a political problem, realizing that the county doesn't have the power to stop these things. It can speak out against what's going on in Israel. But what is without reproach or criticism is a resolution that this county is against all killing of innocent women and children. And with that, nobody can refute that. But let the chips fall where they may as to who thinks innocent children and women are being killed in the world today. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Good morning. I'm Michael Taylor, District 1. I was here late, so I'm assuming, I heard that SR-25-940 was pulled from today's agenda, so I can talk about it. Okay, great. I don't think Tyne has been here for several weeks, so I'm a little bit confused how Tyne is the one that got this on the agenda. I'm a little confused how this even came about without a violation of the Brown Act. You guys haven't publicly talked about this. This has just been thrown on us. I'm surprised it's not on the Consent Calendar, to be honest with you.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Michael. Are you talking about something on the agenda?
No, it was polled, you said.
The one that was polled you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Yeah. This is a perfect example of a workshop. This is going to dramatically affect, would have dramatically affected our system of voting and how we vote for our individuals in our county. This is a great example of a workshop, bringing in the stakeholders that are involved in the elections. I'm just really frustrated this was even here. I'm frustrated that you guys tried to circumvent appointments, giving them six-year terms. It's unbelievable to me that this got to this point to being on the calendar without being lawfully checked. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any callers, Madam Clerk?
We do have one caller.
Okay, let's bring them in. Sorry, we'll come right back to you. Can we bring the caller in, please?
Hello, Board of Supervisors. Matthew Coulter, Nevada County. Being that I've been watching government meetings for decades now, I'm not surprised at all. I'm not surprised that we've gotten to where we've gotten to. I'm not surprised that the amount of corrections has escalated to this point where things are just pushed through in meetings and millions of dollars are spent in the blink of an eye. And the things that you make these decisions on affect people the rest of their lives. Now I'll refer directly to the Board of Supervisors funding of the District Attorney's Office and their ongoing harassment of me and their direct comment to me, direct comment that I can't get any services at the District Attorney's Office as a victim. I must go to the Attorney General's Office in Sacramento for anything. So I am banned now from the District Attorney's Office. I'm banned from every thing that I've paid my entire life to enjoy the fruits of our streets, our sidewalks, our form of government. And as a 60-plus-year-old now, disabled veteran, I'm disgusted. I'm fully disgusted in the Board of Supervisors. I'm disgusted at the City Council. I'm disgusted at the money grab that's going on right now in Grass Valley. Call it the new gold rush. It's all out-of-town developers. We all know you folks will all be moving away. So it doesn't affect you. You don't have skin in the game. The folks that are coming in from out of town, from Vegas, Los Angeles, and beyond, they don't have skin in the game. They're developers. They're in it for one thing. Not community, not quality of life, quick money, and turnover. And to placate these people continually is just outrageous, to the point of allowing them to have violence and put our entire community in danger with fire hazards on their large tracts of land that the homeless have taken over that the county and city will do nothing about until it is a critical fire danger. High fire plan if he flies over. So you guys need to get your shit together, plain and simple. It's pretty disgusting what's going on in this county. Thanks a lot. Bye.
Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Andrew Trigg, the CEO of the Nevada County Fairgrounds. And in just 15 days, we open the Nevada County Fair, August 6 through the 10th this year. Really, really looking forward to it. Just a couple of the highlights I'll share with you. On Wednesday, it's Scholar Students Day, so all of the scholar students from Nevada County, both East and West Nevada County, get to come to the fair completely for free and also get discounted carnival rides. On Thursday, it's Community Day, where it's $3 until 3:00 p.m., so 3 till 3:00. It's the only way I can remember it. And then free admission for all those with disabilities and a chaperone with them as well, all day long until 5:00. Friday is Family Farm Friday. We encourage you to visit Family Farm right behind Treat Street, where we have a bunch of swag, different giveaways. You can meet with all of the local farmers, Nevada County Farm Bureau, all sorts of other groups. Saturday is Military Appreciation Day, where we invite all of those military members, both present and retired, to come and enjoy the fair for free. And then Sunday is Kids' Day. Free admission all day long for kids 12 and under. So those are the highlights there. In the arena, Wednesday, we've got Flying U Extreme Rodeo. This year, super excited to welcome some local barrel racers to the competition, so that'll be a lot of fun to watch. Thursday evening is our Country Concert featuring The Cruz Brothers, Canaan Smith, and William Michael Morgan. Friday and Saturday evening, we have Monster Trucks and Tough Trucks. And then Sunday night is the Two at a Time Rough Truck Racing. If you haven't seen it, it's a blast. Sometimes there's fire and other fun things. But we encourage you to come out and enjoy that. We've got all the favorite rides coming back to the fair this year. One new ride this year is Camels. So if you're out there, hop on the back of a camel and you can go on a camel ride around. A lot of fun. They've been down at the State Fair. And just a really neat exhibit, where they also have a very educational component associated with them as well. We've got Extreme Dog Show out on the green by the dance pad. We've got Magic Bean over in the Magic Forest, which is a kind of a farm-to-fork interactive exhibit and play for the kids. And then also of excitement this year is two new Treat Street booths, where we welcome the Nevada City Little League and Nevada City Oaks Lodge to partake in the Treat Street festivities, both in the corn booth and then what used to be the Chamber of Commerce hamburger booth. So we've got, yeah, five days of all sorts of fun planned. Hope to see you all there. Wednesday has our opening ceremonies, and you all are cordially invited to that. And hope to see you all there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Andrew. Can't wait. Sounds like everything's back.
Good morning. My name's Katie Bealan. I'm the Deputy Manager at the Nevada County Fairgrounds. I've been in Ag my whole life, and so Ag is the heart and soul of how we became the District Agriculture Association. I have heavily involved in Community Involvement Day, which is July 28, 1 to 6, in Main Street Center. We have nonprofits that community members can bring donations and get a buy-one-get-one-free coupon to the fair, so just another way to save a little bit money to come enjoy our beautiful county fair. We have Family Farm, which is where I grew up at the fairgrounds. We have over 10 agriculture communities within Nevada County there to spread their word about agriculture, and we're really excited about that. We have baby pigs, and we will have baby chicks this year. So make sure you go take your picture with the baby pig and the chicks. Friday of the fair, we have our Ag Mechanics Auction, which is youth in agriculture building great, beautiful projects. And so if you would like to attend that, you are more than welcome to come and raise your hand. But just know when you're raising your hand, you may be bidding on a project and supporting the youth in agriculture. Same thing on Sunday morning. Registration opens at 7:00 a.m., and the auction starts at 9:00. And the youth that have spent countless hours on their projects all year round will be selling their animals there. So please come enjoy the fair with us.
Thank you, Katie. Any other public comment in the chambers? Or, and any other callers?
There's no other callers, Chair.
All right, we'll close public comment. Thanks, everyone. And now we're going to move on to Item Number 17, the Nevada County Grand Jury Report and Board Response. And Patrick, is it? Patrick, come on down.
So Chair Hall, I'm happy to introduce this item. We're bringing to you a grand jury report, a long and winding road for homeless of Nevada County. And in response to the report, we have Agency Director of Health and Human Services, Ryan Grover, as well as the Assistant CEO, Patrick Eidman. And before handing it off to them, I just want to personally share my appreciation to the grand jury. As we know, they're community volunteers that really invest many hours to provide input and recommendations on key issues in our community and the county. And we really do appreciate the work that they provided. So thank you for that.
All right. Excuse me. Good morning, Chair Hall, members of the Board. Ryan and I are here this morning with the proposed county response to the 2024-2025 Grand Jury Report. I'll provide a bit of background, and then Ryan will dive into the details of the response. First, the purpose of the grand jury is to investigate the operations of all county agencies, special districts, schools, and other entities that receive public money. The issues that they tackle are chosen by the jurors based on citizen-initiated complaints and/or based on juror initiative. The jury is required to annually inspect all public prisons in the county. The jury may investigate the efficiency of all local government activity, audit financial records, and review all public records. And additionally, deliberations are conducted and secrecy, and jurors are sworn to maintain confidentiality for life. Purpose and overview continue. The grand jury issues reports, which include both findings and recommendations. The public agencies identified, including the county, are required to respond to the findings per Penal Code Section 933.05 within 90 days of the report. Responses incorporate examination of county records, interviews, review of CEO and county council, as well as incorporation of any requested department responses. For the 2024-25 Civil Grand Jury Report, again, a long and winding road for the homeless of Nevada County, the county was requested to provide responses to Findings 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, as well as Recommendations 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. For the Board's information, we are limited in the responses. I just want to provide some context on that now. For each finding, the county must indicate one of the following: agree, disagree with an explanation, and/or partially disagree with an explanation. And then for each recommendation, the county must indicate one of the following: the recommendation has been implemented, the recommendation has not yet been implemented but will be, the recommendation requires further analysis, or the recommendation will not be implemented. With that, I will hand it over to Ryan.
Madam Chair, members of the Board. Ryan Grover, your Health and Human Services Agency Director. And before jumping in today, I just want to echo what Allison said in terms of thanks to the grand jury. This is a thoughtful report. They clearly put a lot of work into it and gathered a lot of information. And there's a lot of places where we feel aligned with the report. So, and first of all, even though they haven't requested a response to this, since I have the microphone, I wanted to thank them for finding one, which praised the county for accomplishing most of what was in their previous grand jury report. So diving in, finding two, this is a place where I feel somewhat limited by our multiple-choice options. I would prefer that this said "partially agree" or "agree with context," but "partially disagree" is what we're left with. The idea that homeless persons living in the WUW present a high fire risk, endangering themselves, county residents, first responders, and property. Yes, we agree that living unchallenged is higher risk. It's higher risk because that person is unchallenged, not because of something inherent with them. It's intuitive that if somebody's conducting the activities of daily life, cooking fires, warming fires, that that presents a fire risk to the community. The reason that it's partially disagree is because there's no formal data to support this. We were able to use, to partner with our GIS team and parse the CAL FIRE information that's publicly available. And you have in your report the causes of fires over a past timeframe. It does not specifically call out homelessness. So anecdotally, we do understand that there's, and intuitively, that there's higher fire risk with homelessness. I will say that all the progress we've made implementing shelter and housing has reduced that fire risk, and we go into that in more detail later. Finding number three, Nevada County in its rural nature is higher fire risk. Nobody could disagree with that. We agree. Finding number four, homelessness continues to increase in Nevada County. The grand jury report itself calls out that the point-in-time count, while an imperfect measure, is the formal and consistent measure. And we agree with that. And it shows a decrease in homelessness in the most recent point-in-time count from 516 to 466. So by the measure that they use, homelessness has decreased in Nevada County between point-in-time counts. There's much more context to that. Nevada County, we use a coordinated entry system where we see people coming into the system every single month. Oftentimes, that outpaces the number of people who are housed in the system. But if you look at the grand jury report, you see quite a bit of information that we've provided regarding the progress that's been made since 2018, when the Board prioritized homelessness. This just represents county efforts increased housing by 212 units, housing and shelter. So you can see the full details on the types of housing in the report. In addition, in coordination with the Regional Housing Authority and with our jurisdictional partners, 307 units of affordable housing have been developed in our community. So yes, the point-in-time count and other numbers, we continue to have a significant homeless problem. That's in the face of having made significant progress. So more people are coming into So more people are coming into homelessness, and with the efforts to house people, our numbers would be hundreds higher if we hadn't embarked on the board's priority of addressing homelessness. And every person that's housed is a reduction in wildfire danger. Finding number five, the county has substantially fewer shelter beds available than the point-in-time count. This is unfortunately true. It's true in every jurisdiction in California where there's a gap between the shelter and the number of people who are homeless, even in jurisdictions that have achieved functional zero. I always call out Rockford, Illinois, because they've achieved functional zero. They have unsheltered people in that community. Moving on to finding number six, law enforcement agencies often find it frustrating dealing with unhoused populations. We agree with this. Law enforcement agencies have difficulty removing homeless camps from private property. We also agree with this. Finding number eight, while Grass Valley, Nevada City, and Truckee have adopted anti-camping laws, the county lacks a comprehensive anti-camping law. The reason we partially disagree with this, we agree that Grass Valley, Nevada City, and Truckee have ordinances. The further context here is that the model ordinance that the state has proposed and similar ordinances often apply to public property only. Camping, unpermitted camping is already not permitted based on ordinance and law on private property. If we were to have an ordinance, it would apply to county property and not state property, not school property, not city property. And we typically have not had a problem addressing encampments on county property. We work with them with our case managements, we have case managers. We have a protocol for addressing that. And so we don't necessarily see a burning need for an ordinance there, which we'll get into in the responses to the recommendations. So recommendation number one, local governments should enact comprehensive, coordinated anti-camping laws. So this is one where we want to do further analysis and bring it back to the board workshop. Upcoming funding, so the homeless funding the state provides is actually potentially going to require the county to adopt an ordinance similar to the state's model ordinance. So we want to put some analysis into potential paths around that and bring it back to your board to see what would be workable in this community. We can't specifically commit to the county will have an ordinance by X date, because that's a public process that has to go through its processes. Recommendation number two, local government should develop one or more low-barrier designated camp areas. This is also a recommendation where we would like to conduct further analysis. We've visited and conducted informal analysis to managed campgrounds, particularly the one in Placer County, which Placer stood up in response to a lawsuit. Many of the managed campgrounds that exist in California exist because cities in particular tried to enforce ordinances when they were under the Boise decision and got sued, and then they were forced to establish a managed campground. We do want to analyze that further. The Placer model, the gathering in who runs it, they're very proud of it. It does serve a role in their system. They also had a perfect location. They had the funding available for it. We see that there are potential benefits, but also a lot of trade-offs with that model. There's misconceptions that, A, everybody will go. Some campgrounds in the region, Chico, as an example, have suffered from low utilization of those resources or people camping just outside. There's a misconception that it counts as shelter. It does not. Whatever we spent on that, it would be considered a service. It would count as unsheltered on our point-in-time count and would not give us any credit towards our accountability measures with the state. And there's a misconception that it's cheaper. The Placer managed campground for 65 units is actually more expensive than the formal congregate shelter down the road because of the higher insurance costs and operating costs associated with the low-barrier nature of that campground. And so we feel it requires a lot further, more analysis before we can make a recommendation to the board and pursue funding for something like that. Recommendation three, government should extend duration of trespass letters. This one is, it's actually not legal for us to do this. The trespass provisions of the Penal Code are a ceiling, not a floor, so we can't go beyond the duration that is set in that statute. We can go below it, but we can't go above it. Recommendation number four, local government should provide additional shelter beds to close the gap between the number of unhoused. Obviously, we still have that gap, so when we say the recommendation has been implemented, we're saying that's what we've been doing for the last seven years, is increasing shelter and increasing housing, and that is what we will continue to do. Recommendation number five, local government should prioritize removing homeless from the WUW. We work on this as well. I'll call out some recent examples. Our sheriff's department partnering with PG&E to clear an encampment way out in the WUW, almost to Placer County in the Lowell Hill. I believe there was press around that. Nevada County, we have a $2.4 million grant to address encampments in the Brunswick Basin and Grass Valley. And another recent example, the camp cleanup that we did on Dorsey Drive in a wildfire-prone area that was adjacent to the hospital, other critical infrastructure. We do prioritize removing encampments from the WUW. We have some new resources to address that, and we will continue implementing this recommendation. Recommendation six, local government should expand current criteria used to determine warping shelters. We actually did this last year for our contracts with Sierra Roots and North San Juan Community Center. We took out the county criteria and allowed those providers to open maximally with the funding available. So we already did this. Recommendation seven, the county should update the 2018 10-year plan to address the report's findings. This keeps coming up, so I just want to be explicit here. The 2018 plan was a required component of No Place Like Home funding source. If you look at the plan, it's really a menu, like a menu of options for potential strategies and funding sources. It's not a strategic plan. We have, it was a useful document. We've used many of those things. There were a variety of plans and statements and work that had been done, and really the leadership of Supervisor Hall directing us to come up with a comprehensive plan. In 2020, the county came up with a comprehensive plan, informed by and incorporating all those previous plans, so that we now have one plan. It was updated in a Phase Two in 2022 and co-adopted by the COC. Upcoming funding, along with potentially requiring an ordinance, might require a third phase of that plan. So we will not be updating the 2018 plan because it was already incorporated into our current plan. So that concludes the response.
All right. Our thanks again to the grand jury for this report and for their ongoing work. With that, we're happy to answer any questions.
And Chair Hall, I just want to recognize members of the grand jury that came into the chambers mid-presentation to recognize the work that they've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, welcome. Thanks to the grand jury. Thanks to staff for this comprehensive response draft for us to approve or not approve. Any comments from the board?
Yeah, thank you again to the grand jury. A lot of time and effort goes into not only this report, but all the reports and selection of topic areas that you have to look at. I know there's a lot of them. I thought the report was deficient, in my opinion. It lacked all the detail on Eastern County. So one of the examples, for me, there's kind of these two sides of the coin, the impact side and then the benefit side. On the impact side, one of the pieces that came up in the report was this listing of the fire risk, the WUW fire risk. We didn't have anything on the Pass Fire, which was interesting because that was directly kind of an ignition source in the Donner Pass area that ended up creating a catastrophic fire there. So I was kind of disappointed that maybe we didn't look closer at some of the Eastern County impacts from the homeless population. I know it's definitely not the scale of the issue that we see in Western County, but still quite a bit of impact in that Eastern County from that type of activity. The other piece on the impact side for me was this general lack of community awareness about homelessness, homelessness issues, lack of resource for homelessness, and unhoused people in Eastern County. So I was hoping the report may touch on that. Not to say that I'm looking for pieces to integrate into the county or add difficulty to the problem that we already face, because we have a lot of effort that we're putting in in that arena. But if you're talking about the report and it's on balance and in total, taken as a whole, I wish there was more detail related to Eastern County in the report. On the benefit side, the report goes into talking about Sierra Roots, which is a great organization, and also the Commons Resource Center, which is a great resource, you know, that we've all worked really hard to fund and build up and put in place. We don't have commensurate resources or nonprofit communities necessarily adapted to take care of our homeless population in Eastern County, and I wish the report had have mentioned that so that we could integrate those findings into the staff recommendations. In my opinion, staff's already aware of these things and probably putting them into the report, into their report back. So I would look for the report out, the final report out, to mention those facts. But the other piece on the benefit side is that the Eastern County community's been working with T.HAC, the Truckee-Towell Homeless Advisory Committee, for almost 18 months. So that's been a multi-jurisdictional effort from Placer County, Nevada County, the town of Truckee, the faith-based community, the hospital district, and others. And I was disappointed that the report didn't actually address the benefit of that group because a lot of effort's gone into that group, not only from the county side as a funder and a lot of energy's gone into it, but also from these jurisdictional partners who have finally kind of come to realize that it's a community solution that's going to, you know, solve homelessness, just like it has in Western County. So from that perspective, I was hoping it would be more definitive. In my opinion, investigate low-barrier camping is a hard yes. I think we need to look at that closely. I think a workshop topic would be great. I think having a community conversation about that would be great. The second part, removing campers from the WUW. I agree with that, but again, without a camping alternative, I really don't understand where those people are supposed to go. That's been a large consideration for all communities in the state of California. And you mentioned Butte County, which is interesting. I'm not saying it's a perfect solution, but without any solution, it's hard to ask somebody to move where they can walk from their campsite to services or to food or to water or to a bathroom when we don't have any alternative. And then number seven, the plan update. I think it's our recommendation in here not to update the plan. Totally supportive of that, but I think we need a quote-unquote "plan" for Eastern County, and I think it's a great time to put that in, so I'd like to see that in the response.
Yeah, thanks for all the work on this. Since really what's before us is approving the response, I'll leave the comments about the actual report, which I think did a good job of outlining a lot of the issues and reminding us. I'll focus more on the county's response. Really, I don't have a lot of issues with it. It looks like all the recommendations, save two of them, have either been implemented or were planning to implement. One of those, you talked about being prohibited by law. The second one, number seven, Hardy just talked about, and you addressed that it's, that report in 2018 is flexible and just kind of a menu. So I don't have any real problems with it. The only, I guess, general comment I would make, and I think this is part of a larger, complex issue, and we'll address it more going forward, is that, and it kind of relates to number four, I think, about the issue of homelessness, the numbers decreasing. And I think in the report, it talks about homelessness continues to increase in the county. And I think the kind of discrepancy there goes back to what Hardy mentioned, the impacts versus kind of the numbers, in that the number of homelessness in that point-in-time count can be going down, but the problem can be getting worse. And I think everybody understands that, and it's a deeper issue. But if the impacts are getting worse, as in those who are still living on the street and the impacts to the community, even if the numbers is going down, I guess it's fair to say homelessness is increasing. So it's a complex issue. I don't have any problem with our response. And yeah, thanks for all your work on this.
All right, thank you. I'm going to open a public comment before I make any comments on this.
Michael Taylor, District 1. I didn't read the grand jury report, so I'm going to own up to that right away. I wanted to point out that some of the worst fires in Nevada County started with homelessness, the 49er fire. So fires are a huge threat. If someone starts a fire at the base of Banner Mountain and it burns up the hill, we would reevaluate, could we afford a homeless camp? If Nevada City burns down because of a fire, would we reevaluate, should we have put in a homeless camp? And the other thing I want to talk about is the numbers for the homelessness. The net numbers are getting bigger because you guys are housing more homeless. There might be less in the point of time, but if you add those up, how many are being housed and how many are still on the street, it's a significant increase. If you factor in children, kids couch surfing, people living in their car, people living in illegal structures, homelessness is a huge problem in Nevada County. You guys know it. The reason I don't think we have a homeless camp is because we don't have the money for it. If we got some amazing grant from the feds or the state, we'd figure out how to employ a bunch of people to create a homeless camp. And skim off the top of that, a lion's share for county staff. But the money isn't there, so we don't have a camp. People have been advocating for camps for as long as I can remember. Holly, or Polly, and many people in our community have been advocating for a camp and coming up with ideas. And one idea that I had when I was running for supervisor was trying to figure out how to do it in a similar way as a CAL FIRE. CAL FIRE, there's a fire. They show up, they put in infrastructure for food and laundry and sleeping and overnight, within a 24-hour period, they can put together a camp. They can house hundreds of people, if not thousands of people. There is solutions. There is a solution, and I think a workshop is what we need to hear everybody's ideas on a homelessness camp. And I think a workshop should be happening as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any callers?
We do have one caller.
Okay, let's take that, and then we'll come back to the chambers.
Thank you. Can we bring the caller in now, please?
Hi, this is Todd Durkin from the No Place to Go Project. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello. Oh, thank you. We have a catch-22 situation in that we can't count people as sheltered if they're put into a low-barrier camp, but if we enact anti-camping ordinance, we are driving them back further into the WUW. So it's silly to be going out chasing them when we're driving them out there. So a low-barrier camp is better than no camp, even if it doesn't count towards shelter. I've been to the Butte County Managed, and I would use that word advisedly, out camp. It is a horror show. It's an occupied garbage dump. It's not supervised. The bathrooms, such as they are, too, porta potties right next to the street outside the camp. That's terrible. So we've been advocating a low-barrier camp for a long, long time, and if we can't keep people out of the woods, we're just increasing the fire risk. Because I talked to the people who are out in the woods, and they say that's why they're there, because if you, like in Nevada City, you get a ticket. You're ticketing people who don't have money in the first place. So it's not the county's thing, but I think we need to consider a low-barrier camp, even if it doesn't count towards sheltering people. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We do have an additional caller. Do you want to take that?
Let's go back here and we'll take that one.
Thank you.
Shirley Osgo, District 3. I'm going to speak in agreement with what Hardy said, what I think I heard you said, Hardy, was it's really tricky to kick people out of camps when they really don't have an official camp to go to where they have services. It's pretty easy for me to imagine myself being homeless, and several members of my family have been homeless. And if not for me being able to provide a space for them to live, my grandchildren would be homeless. So I think, and this is another big thing, you have to have bathrooms. You have to have, if you don't want to be stepping on shit in the sidewalk of your town, you have to have a place where people can go to respectfully, as human beings use bathing facilities and bathrooms. It's just a must. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go back to the caller. Thank you.
Yes, can we bring the caller in, please?
Hi, this is Matthew Coulter out here on the street in Grass Valley, walking around, meeting homeless people that aren't counted, because the count is done in January on a rainy day when people are hunkered down, and so it's a false count and has been for a number of years. We all know that. When Dorsey Marketplace was cleaned off recently and that big clear cut happened, there's 30 people up there. No one's under any illusion that they're not up there. No one's under any illusion that there's not fires going on. It's the same thing on the Rise Gold property on Idaho Merrill. You do your token camp cleanup once a year. It hits the paper. Everyone, look at everyone that's helped and, oh, boy, and it's great. But then the spillover from all those people, go look at where they're living. They're living... They're living on the sidewalk on Sutton Way. They're living in doorways. They're living in, immediately, they started squatting in houses. Along Bennett Street, they were empty. We have so many empty houses in town due to Second, Third, Fourth, and Airbnb's that it's a plethora of places to stay. But once the rains do come, that's pretty much what's going to happen. So for many years, I've asked for a trash can, water, and a place where people can be. So you have an option. When you do meet these folks, then they are a fire hazard, and they do need help, and they need a place that they can relax, they have a place to go. Because moving them from today, for example, from the ATM at the bank to Speedway to Three Kings across the street to Walgreens and back to Bank of America in a non-stop cycle isn't doing anything for the business owners in Grass Valley or the county. We know where the camps are, we know the people, they're not coming in, they don't want services. They're here for drugs, that's what they are here for. You can ask them. They make it very clear. They want drugs. They don't want food, they don't want services, they don't want your help. But to help everyone from burning to the ground, we need to help ourselves. And that includes the place where they can go and be legally. And if they don't like it, they can go to all the other places that are kicking them out right now, all around us. If you follow my page, you'll see all the municipalities around us, from San Francisco to Reno are moving camps. And we are above the snow and above the fog, and we're the perfect place to be. So if I'm still being heard, then that's what I have to say for today. Thanks a lot, Board of Supervisors, and I think the grand jury needs to get out on foot more. I'd love to take a moment to, thanks a lot.
All right, thanks. Any other comments in the chambers?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'm Lee French, out of Sierra, resident. As you know, I have been vocal about the new ordinances coming up, and I feel that dispersing people among residential areas does not fit the bill. It degrades not only the area, the value of the area, the families, et cetera. I think that you've heard many people say there's no place to go, then that's what we need to provide. I have not once heard anyone talk about a safe-stay campground where services are provided. And I've also heard that even though we may set aside a large area for RVs and for people living in their cars and for tents and so on, that people do not want an organized area to go to where they have to comply with rules. Too bad. I think that for the good of the multitude of people we have who are residents in this county, that we must provide this and enforce the fact that you do now have a place to go with services. And most of them don't want to come to someplace like that because they're afraid they're going to be out where they can't get to town. You'll find that even the wooded areas like Dorsey, see, we had 30 people up there, and the reason they were there is it's a very short walk to the stores and so on and to other services. So we need to provide that place, and I think we need to look into a safe-stay area that the county can set aside 10, 20 acres, whatever, with all of the amenities that we need to service the homeless. Thank you.
My name is Misty Lee. I live on Banner Mountain, I believe that's District One. When Nevada County first had cannabis compliance or cannabis had come into our county, we all pulled together and we did a workshop. That workshop had standing room only, and we have resolved a lot of our issues with cannabis, cannabis industry in our community. I feel that if we were to get a workshop together, there are numerous people in this county that are gunning, are fighting, are doing what they can, but they feel helpless. If we can get a community workshop together, I think that we would have standing room only, and we would be able to solve, at least get a lot of good ideas instead of kind of passing the buck. I've worked with No Place With Home. I have a nonprofit, and I work with fire survivors, I work with homeless. And if we can just get a workshop, I really honestly think we can come together as a community again and resolve another huge issue in our community.
Thank you. Any other comments in the chambers? Any other callers?
There's no callers.
Okay, going to close public comment, bring it back to the board. Any of that you want to comment on, Ryan or Patrick?
Yes, Chair Hall, thank you. I just want to provide some clarification on what I see as a false choice that's being presented between either you do a managed campground or there's nothing for people. That is not how our services work. In fact, we have upcoming grants pending for Home Key that are going to add 40 beds to our system if they're awarded. And so that has the same effect of getting somebody off the street and also addressing their long-term needs and permanent supportive housing. So it's not you clear an encampment, and if you don't have a managed campground, there's nothing. In fact, with the recent Dorsey project, so far, we have 16 of the 30 people who are identified up there who have been connected to interim housing or permanent housing in some cases. And that's part of the grant, is to provide for housing associated with that. So it's not a managed campground or nothing. We have tended to prioritize housing that has long-term impact for those folks because it has the same benefit in terms of wildfire mitigation, but also that long-term benefit. But we're not saying no to camping. We're recommending that the board direct us to further analyze it and come back with more information and data.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Okay, and I just want to thank you also, did you have one more comment? Okay, I want to thank the grand jury did, I thought, a really good job. I hear my colleagues' concerns about East County. That's a big, a lot of work you took on, and that would have been an additional item. But I thought, you know, I appreciate your attention to an issue that we've considered a high priority in this county for a long time. And thanks also to staff for really doing a thorough job in explaining our program. Homelessness is so complicated to resolve. I am very proud, I will continue to say that, of the program we have in this county. It is a model county for the rural areas. We have been very successful at bringing in funds to provide actual housing for our homeless folks and increase our services to them. And that is always the challenge, is where does the funding come from? So we are going to be looking at the possibility of a camp again. Since I've been on this board and this has been an objective, we've informally discussed that. It's really expensive, they are hard to success, make them successful. And to some of your points, a lot of folks don't want to go in those. And in this county, we don't force people to someplace that they don't want to be. So we have to work with our homeless, our homeless community and with the resources that we actually have to come up with a solution. I appreciate the suggestion for a workshop, it's something we can look at. But for the moment, I appreciate the work that's gone into both this report and the responses. Hardy, you wanted to make a comment?
Oh, I'm ready for a motion, but it has one little piece to it, if you're ready.
You're going to add a piece to the motion?
Yep.
Okay. I'm looking, well, we'll see. I'm looking for a motion.
Okay.
To accept this report.
I'd accept the report with one minor change, and that would be a request, a recommendation number seven on the planning effort. I would just add, request that, an addendum, a minor addendum to our plan, which would include a plan for East County be added to that document. It could be as short as two pages. In light of the recent activity in Eastern County with T-hack and the hospital and the town and all of our partners, we have kind of a newfound insight into what that community may need. And I'd like to plan, you know, the 2018 plan to reflect that in some annotated version, a small addendum to the 2018 plan, adopt the findings here.
Yeah, we're not, we're not doing 2018, we're not updating the 2018 plan, 2018 plan, for one. I think this might be not an appropriate place to add that, but I appreciate your concern. So let's turn it to staff and see what they could do.
Chair Hall, an alternative would be to do a board order to come back to address Supervisor Bullock's issues that he's raised. And then, and then it would be helpful to provide clarification how an Eastern County plan would be different than the T-hack plan that we recently brought to the board.
Would, that would be okay, so we could keep this motion clean, and then we'll come back and do a board order?
Okay. With that, I totally understand, that sounds great. I'd make the same motion, remove all that language, but I think it should be changed to partially disagree and recommendation not yet implemented, but will be soon, right? That would be the piece to come back with the board changes?
I don't think we have that flexibility in terms of the language.
So we do, we could change the partially agree, so if we could go back to that slide, so there's clarification on that. And then Supervisor Bullock, what number was that?
That's number seven, recommendation seven. That's the last, last one. Response will not be implemented, would be partially disagree, which is the same, and then recommendation not yet implemented.
Is that something you could do?
Supervisor Hall and Supervisor Bullock, I think a piece that's not coming through here, the 2018 plan is obsolete. It has been obsolete since the 2020 plan passed. And so the recommendation of the grand jury to update that has basically already been done because it's incorporated into the 2020, and then the subsequent iteration, the 2022 Homeless Action Plan. And so there will be an upcoming phase to that. There's also the T-hack plan, and to CEO Allison Lehman's point, how does that fit into updating our plan to incorporate it Truckee when the board's already formally adopted that T-hack plan? And so I think that would be something that if you direct us to come back with, like in that next update to the homeless plan, we incorporate the T-hack plan and work through what that looks like, that's workable. But specific to the grand jury's recommendation to update the 2018 plan.
Not applicable.
The 2018 plan is not applicable. It's already been absorbed into the other plans.
Okay, understood. I'll move to approve.
Do I have a second? So we're having a, sorry.
This is motion to approve the...
As is.
Second.
Okay. Motion second. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Chair. District Five.
Yes.
District Two.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
And District One.
Yes. Thank you. And then let's go to a board order. So we'd like to suggest a board order to, Hardy, would you like to...
Yeah, just make a minor addendum to the latest plan, including substantive components from the T-hack plan and anything else that staff feels is relevant, to add that addendum into our most recent plan.
Does that make sense, Ryan, for you? Okay. And do we need a motion and second on this?
Just board agreement at this point, and we'll go ahead and have the board order be implemented.
Okay.
A timeline would be, a timeline within the next two months?
Year, I mean, I think within the year of 2020, within this calendar year would be great.
What I would request, because there, I believe there are grant requirements associated with an update to our plan, I'd like to align with that timing so that we're not doing it twice, if possible. So I don't have that off the top of my head, but yeah.
Acceptable to me, thank you.
Okay. Okay, do I have board agreement here? Yeah? Okay. Do you need a vote, Kit? Do we need a vote on this?
No, it's just board direction.
Okay, so you have board direction on that. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody, and thanks to the grand jury again for your good work. Okay, yeah, absolutely. Okay, we're going to move on to item number 18. Resolution proclaiming, claiming August 2025 as Child Support Awareness Month in Nevada County, California. And Paul Johnson is going to be presenting.
Morning.
Welcome, Paul.
Chair Hall.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good morning, other members of the board. My name is Paul Johnson, I am your Director of Child Support Services. I just want to start by thanking you...
Can you speak right into the microphone for us, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that better? Okay. It sounds pretty loud from here, but I'm your Director of Child Support Services, just want to thank you for having me here today. I'm going to take about 15 minutes of your time to give you an overview of our services. So knowing I have limited time, I'm just going to jump right in. I always like to start by answering the question, what is child support? It is a court-ordered financial obligation by one or both parents to ensure the child's well-being and reasonable standard of living. Simply put, we ask one parent to make a monthly payment to the other parent in a lower-income household or where the parent has a majority-time share. Our mission is to enrich the lives of children by encouraging parents to share financial responsibilities in an equitable and courteous manner. I want to highlight that this mission, in addition with our vision and values, was a product of a one-day workshop we did last year that was HBO-driven. All of our staff attended that workshop and had equal input. Their fingerprints are on our mission, vision, values, so very proud of that. Moving to our demographics, we are a regionalized agency. We serve both Nevada and Sierra counties. We have just under 2,400 families. We serve Nevada County as the majority of that, with just over 2,300, and then Sierra County, mere 62 cases. Those numbers, you know, more or less correlate to the population demographics of the respective counties. We have a $3.7 million operating budget, and this is the part that hopefully puts a smile on your face. No general fund money whatsoever is expended for our services. We are funded one-third by the state, two-thirds by Fed. That's something known as federal financial participation. Fifty years ago, Title IV D of the Social Security Act was passed, and it made child support more of a national program administered at the state and local level. Our staffing is 17 full-time employees, when we're fully staffed up. I like to say we're small and mighty, serving around 2,400 cases with limited staff. Highlighting just a few areas of our impact, this year through federal fiscal year that will end in September of '25, we're projecting to collect $7.9 million. Two things I want to highlight there, one is that that is about a 10% increase over last year, so very proud of that. And the second thing is that this is money that's going into households and families in our communities, in Truckee, Nevada City, Grass Valley, unincorporated areas. So this has a real impact. You know, think about what $8 million does for a parent needing support to support their children. We are a poverty reduction program. We're often not thought of being one, but Child Support reduces child poverty across the nation by 7% on average. And for single-parent families experiencing poverty, it's about 41% of their income. When you think of safety net services, you often think of CalFresh, Medi-Cal, things like that. Child Support is actually a safety net service as well. And these numbers are from the Office of Child Support Services, which is couched within the Federal Health and Human Services Agency. So reliable data there, providing you about how we are a safety net service. We are a conflict reduction program as well. As you can imagine, when we are interacting with our customers, we're doing that at a point in their lives where there's a lot of emotional turmoil, divorce, breakup, separation, you know, disputes over custody. We're finding people probably in one of the worst states they can be in in life and one of the worst experiences in their life. We strive to make the process transparent for them, to give people information to make empowered decisions for themselves. And ultimately, our hope is to reach a negotiated outcome on child support. We find that when we do that, we have higher engagement and higher compliance with the child support orders we do get. And so I always like to say it's a boutique child support service that we provide, and I do think we're a model in the state with how we treat our customers, just treating them like humans, honestly. And so by doing that, we reduce the conflict between families. I'm going to get a little more into what we do. So first thing is establishing parentage. This, you know, the legal recognized parentage between a child and a parent is a starting point for everything, for the responsibilities, the rights and the privileges between that parent and child. So for unwed parents, it's hugely important that they have that legally recognized parentage established. First way that often happens is through a voluntary declaration of parentage. So if mom and dad have a kid in the hospital, the staff will often offer them this document saying, hey, would you like to sign this if you're not married? And this becomes as good as a court order establishing who the parents are. If there's no voluntary declaration of parentage, then we'll go to court and get an order. If there's no voluntary declaration of parentage, then we'll go to court and get an order deeming who the parents are the old fashioned way. But again, you know, it's an important vital function for establishing the rights and the responsibilities, not only for the parent, but also for the child. And then we establish and modify child support. As I mentioned before, child support is a monthly amount paid from one household to another. And then I think will probably become important going forward. We get health insurance orders for children. In light of the recent federal legislation, we will probably see an uptick in that requirement. So simply put, if we have a parent that's working for an employer who provides health insurance, we can get a court order asking to make sure that the children are added to that health insurance program. And then kind of in the background, we collect and distribute payments. So from the day a case opens in our office, we know how much is owed, we know how much is paid. If you can imagine, from birth to emancipation, 18 years of accounting that we do as a part of our service. And then we take enforcement actions on delinquent support. We have a statewide system known as CSC that does a lot of made, a lot of automated enforcement. We get information from EDD, from DMV, from private banking institutions, social security, the IRS. And so when someone is behind on support, this system will do a lot of automated enforcement. It'll hit a bank account, it'll intercept a tax return, suspend a license. That's all automated. And a lot of times we don't find out about it in our office until the person owing support calls us and tells us. I always like to say it's two computers talking. If that fails, then we have manual intervention we can do, potentially bring someone to court for contempt. We always use that as a last resort. I like to use the example of someone owes a bunch of support and they're due to receive an inheritance, and we can go to probate court and get, get the money due on the arrears before it goes to the beneficiary who owes support. And then none of this is possible until we locate the parents. That's another function that CSC does, our computer program does, that's automated through those locate partners, through the different databases that feed in to, to find where people are. Sometimes people are off the grid and when that happens, we have, I have my staff here. They're really good about investigating people on the internet, trying to find people so we get them served. In fact, so good that we've worked with San Joaquin County when they can't find folks and we help them locate them so they can get them served. We're kind of a model in that area as well. So moving on, this is where we talk about the impact of our services. So as I said, we get federal money to run the program. And as you know, you never get federal money without some strings attached. So in this case, you know, the feds want to know how well does a given child support program do, tell us the outcomes, and that's known as federal performance measures. So highlighting here, we're often ranked in the top 10, if not the top 5 throughout the state. And last federal fiscal year, we were number two throughout the state. So we're, we're ranked among the other 47 child support agencies within the state of California. And every year we knock it out of the park. If you look at that left column, that is our federal fiscal year to date through May 2025 numbers. On the right column is the state average. You can see hands down, we're beating the state average. I'll just highlight the current collected. So here we are in the month of July. If, for example, across all our cases, $100,000 in child support is due and owing in July, that 70.7% means we've collected $71,000. Again, that's a true impact. That's money going into the households of the families, to our neighbors and our communities. And so I really want to recognize my staff. If you all could just wave to the board. All right. I talked about sort of that, that boutique child support service. And it is the relationships they build with our customers that results in, in how well we do. It's getting customers engaged, getting customers caring. We are a small office. I, I hear the phone conversations they have, the hard work they put in every day. And it's just phenomenal, the diligence and the care they put into caring about our customers and driving these results. So all credit to them. I want to end by just recognizing you all have a resolution in front of you to declare August Child Support Awareness Month. This is something we coordinate with State DCSS, which is our oversight state agency every year in the month of August, just to raise awareness about who we are. We're oftentimes confused with child welfare, so sometimes I feel like we got to elbow our way to the table to create visibility and sort of clarify what we do as a department. As a part of that, we also do a backpack drive that coordinate or correlates with children going back to school in August. Josie Garcia, who's our program manager, has been spearheading that for five years. She's put a lot of hard work and dedication into that. This year, we have 300 backpacks stuffed with school supplies that we're giving out. Most of those are going to go to our nonprofits, Bright Futures for Youth, Community Beyond Violence, Sierra Community House in our eastern county. So we make sure those backpacks end up in the hands of the kids who need it most. We are doing a giveaway tomorrow at the Veterans Fair, and then we'll have another one at the San Juan, North San Juan Community Center. I think it's August 14th. So with that, I really thank you for your support and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. This is wonderful. We're running a little bit behind already, so I'm just going to bring it back to the board, clarifying questions only at this point. Okay, we're going to open public comment. And anybody calling in, any public comment in the chambers? Any callers? Madam Clerk?
We have no callers, Chair.
Okay. Okay, then I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board. Any comments? Ideas, thoughts? Sue?
No, but I just want to thank you guys for the work you do. It's really important and the backpack program is so important. We did that at North San Juan last year when it was tremendous turnout and we did tacos and ice cream and you guys were fabulous. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Supervisor Hook.
Yeah, thank you so much. It's got to be tough. Like your staff members have to be in a really compassionate place to help two people that obviously care about a child, but still can't come together. So keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob? Okay. Okay, great. Then I'm going to call for a motion and a second. So move.
To adopt a resolution. Second.
Right? Roll call vote?
District five?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
And district one?
Yes. Fantastic. So we have a resolution. In the interest of time, I'm not going to read it, but we'd love to have, have your staff come down. We'll take a picture. Thank you all for all your hard work. I know this is a relatively new unit, new unit as well, and you're doing incredible work. So it's been approved. Here's your resolution. Let's come on down and take a picture. All right. Thank you so much. We're moving on to item number 18. Nope, 19. A resolution proclaiming June 2025 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Nevada County. And Rachel, please take it away.
Yeah, thank you so much. Good morning, Chair Hall and members of the board. I'm Rachel Penya, your social services director, and I'm here with Kelly Carpenter, the program manager for adult services and your public guardian. We're here to present Elder Abuse Awareness Month. You'll notice that it is, it is in June, but we wanted to have enough time to really talk about the services that we provide to raise awareness about this important issue, but also to support our seniors throughout the, throughout their lives in many different areas. So we're here to talk a little bit about elder abuse awareness, but also about our master plan on aging. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kelly to talk about the incredible work that she and her staff are doing.
There it goes. Good morning, Chair Hall and members of the board. I am Kelly Carpenter, the program manager for adult services. Last month was Elder Abuse Awareness Month, and I wanted to share the work that is being done in APS. APS is housed under adult services umbrella. We receive APS reports from our other team members, the community and our community partners. Our focus is 60 and older and adults living with a disability 18 to 59. Okay, next slide. Elder abuse can be physical, sexual, emotional, confinement, neglect and financial. Warning signs to be aware of are bruising, pressure marks, abrasions, withdrawal from normal activities, unusual depression, unattended medical needs, poor hygiene and sudden change in financial, just to name a few. Immediate danger calls should be made to 911. All other reports come to our office to investigate. All reporting parties are kept confidential and never released to the client unless the reporting party has given us permission to do so. Nationally, elder abuse is underreported. For every one case of elder abuse, 44 cases are not reported. Next slide. During national statistics, pre pandemic study estimated that one in 10 Americans have experienced some form of elder abuse. During COVID, a more recent study found that one in five older adults reported elder abuse. We experienced a spike in our local APS cases as well during this time. Nationally, one in 24 cases are reported to the proper authorities, either that be IHS APS or law enforcement. Typical abusers are both men and women of all ages. The National Center for Elder Abuse Call Center found that 47% of the abusers were family, 13% were non-family caregivers and 7% were not sure who the abuser was. Financial loss due to financial abuse annually is over $28 billion. Financial abuse extends beyond immediate loss to also family caregivers and social safety net programs to assist with paying for care when the loved one is exploited. Here are our local stats for this past year. We investigated roughly 1,300 cases and 51 of those cases were in Truckee. Oftentimes, the reported abuse will come under one category, but once investigated, other types of abuse are uncovered and these numbers reflect that. We have, oh, I'm sorry. We have state mandated benchmarks we are required to meet, face to face compliance, home visit compliance, assessment and service plan compliance. I am happy to report that our overall average in all four categories is last fiscal year was 100%. With our aging population, we are seeing more and more self neglect cases due to simply not having enough resources to meet the rising cost of living. If they do have savings, most clients are not willing to spend their resources on needed care services. Because of this, most of our cases tend to open and close on a pretty regular basis. Financial abuse is the next most common abuse and usually is associated with computer scams, phone or scammers or family members. Sadly, we see plenty of cases where the senior is contributing financially, financially to a family member to their care detriment. Next slide. Our APS cases are reviewed and assigned to our two amazing social workers. Depending on the case severity, the cases are assigned either with a two day, immediate or a 10 day response. Our visits are mostly unannounced. Our services are voluntary unless it's in an emergency situation. We discuss the report of concern with our client and they have the right to share their side of the story or discount the report altogether. We prepare a risk assessment, develop a service plan or safety plan if the client is willing. If we suspect elder abuse, we cross report to law enforcement to further investigate and determine if there is enough evidence to forward to the district attorney for prosecution. We do follow up visits to our most vulnerable clients to ensure their situation has been stabilized. We offer specific referrals to help meet their needs. We also complete an EA Elder Abuse 100 paperwork with our clients to be able to evict an abuser from their home in a much quicker manner. So how do we keep our community as safe as possible? It's the magic of collaboration. I am very proud of our successful APS multidisciplinary team meetings. We started in January of 2024 with just a few community partners. Our meetings have grown to approximately 20 members. We have a good mix of law enforcement, fire, hospital staff, crisis, behavioral health, medical clinics and agency partners. Truckee law enforcement and a member of the Truckee homeless team has also joined us via Teams as well. We collaborate and troubleshoot on high need cases that touch all of our departments. This collaboration reduces duplication and gives us all a much better understanding of what our services have been provided and the limitations within each of our agencies. These meetings have facilitated bridges versus silos and our MDT partners reach out to us far more frequently to do joint home visits with them on higher need cases. An example of this, we had an egregious self negligent APS case that opened and closed frequently over a two year period. We did joint home visits, worked closely with mobile crisis, the fire department, hospital social worker and APS attended an ethical review meeting at the hospital. All of this effort was to ensure that we were doing everything legally and humanly possible to support this client. The growth of the MDT collaboration has been invaluable. Another way we are keeping our safe, our community safe and connected is the continued work we are doing through the master plan on aging. Our main partner is our team at Freed. We hold quarterly meetings to share community updates and to work on these six goal areas that have various start dates through January, June of 2026. This past December, we met to review the 2024 progress and I want to share some highlights of our success in this goal area. Under goal one, in Eastern County, our senior center was open this past year. A big thank you to Leslie Lovejoy and her team that worked tirelessly to make this happen. Last year, I connected with the tribal wellness program manager with the Nisamon Tribe and we had successful APS meetings and remain a resource and a direct contact for them. Adult services secured a, an AT&amp;T grant, $372,000. And we partnered with Freed to distribute iPads and Chromebooks to approximately 200 community members, including Truckee and six local organizations that serve seniors and folks living with a disability. Goal two, with CalAid assistance, any bed based on availability at Hospitality House can be used to pay for a recuperative, a recuperative bed when needed for a senior or a medically vulnerable adult. Under goal three, with CalAid assistance, respite hours are now available through 24 hour home care and we refer to them off, often. Also in Truckee, we partnered with a local property owner to post recruitment flyers for more IHSS caregivers in the Truckee, in the Truckee area. Adult services staff also attend Truckee outreach events to further share information. Under goal four, again with CalAid dollars, we are actively referring to 24 hour home care while our IHSS clients are getting their applications completed. This bridges the care need until they are able to be formally assessed for IHSS hours. And expanded transportation, again with partnership managed care, this has improved the access to transportation to overall medical and non-medical needs. We are also currently working with Area Four on researching the feasibility of a volunteer transportation program. And it's a three year cycle that we'll look at this. So in closing, the entire adult services team is out in the community, serving with kindness, compassion and professionalism. I am incredibly proud of the work that we do in our community and so grateful to be working for this team. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly, so much. Such an important topic and very sad to hear it, but important that the public understands and knows what can be done to help our elder population. Questions from the board? Lisa, you're on aging, the area four.
Yeah, no questions. Thank you. It's been a lot of discussion at Area Four about funding moving forward from the federal government. So I know that you will keep a surprise of what's going on there. It looks like they fully funded Meals on Wheels this, for this year.
They did.
Which is great. I understand that false prevention potentially is not going to be funded. So I think there's a commitment from our partner, Sierra Nevada Memorial Hospital, keep that going. So collaboration, obviously with our other organizations in the community is really important and you guys are doing a great job. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
No, just thanks, Kelly. Great. I mean, it's sad that we have to think about these things, but it's so real. Great, I mean, it's sad that we have to think about these things, but it's so real in life. It's just kind of amazing and I just wanted to say your team is so responsive because I've sent folks to you or had to and you guys are just so on it so quick and I just always appreciate that for my constituents. It's just nice to know that I have a place I can call too because some people are afraid to call. And that's been the thing and you know, when you get to talk to them and explain what a team is there and it's not about taking your adult rights away or any of those kinds of things and you guys do such a great job with that. I hope people listening, if they feel like they need to reach out because you guys are just the epitome of what it needs to be to deal with aging people, so thank you for that. Your team's not here today, but please let them know how much we appreciate them.
I definitely will, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Kelly. Thanks for being so responsive to particularly all the comments and complaints and emails that we get on this topic from my constituents, which are a lot, and so thank you so much for being responsive. A lot of times it goes into the process and then it comes back out with, you know, you've talked to them, you've already met with them, you've met with the care provider or you've met with whoever it may be involved in that situation, so it's just kind of bringing us up to speed, but I just wanted to say thanks for all the hard work on this.
Okay, we're going to open it up for public comment. And are there any callers, Madam Clerk?
There are no callers, Chair.
All right. All right, closing public comment, back to the board. Any final comments or questions? Looking for a motion and a second to adopt the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
And District 1.
Yes. Thank you so much and we have a proclamation for you two, but I don't think you want, just pass this photo. Thank you so much, both of you. All right, we're going to keep moving. Again, we're a little bit behind schedule, so ask everyone to be mindful of that. We're going to move on to our scheduled item? No. It is. See, that's how late we are. Resolution to amend the consolidated user fee schedule for county departments to clarify building fee for owner-built limited-density rural dwellings. And Tricia, thank you. And George.
Good morning. Tricia Tilson, Community Development Agency Director, and I'm joined by George Shurek, our Building Director, as well as Alicia Chatterverdilla. She's our Chief Fiscal and Administrative Officer for CDA. So as background, proposed fees for fiscal year 25, '26 were brought before the board at your June 10 meeting. One of those fees was the Title 25 residential permit fee, which is reduced from a regular building permit fee since Title 25 of state housing regulations allows owners in rural zones to bypass certain requirements such as solar system installation, fire sprinklers or engineered construction documents, as long as minimum health and safety standards are met. This new fee, based on a time study, was proposed at $1,717.54 plus 16 cents per square foot. The board asked for this fee to come back to consider a subsidy to provide the service at an even lower cost. This comparison information identifies the base fee for an 1,800-square-foot home. Regular residential build, for example, would be about $2,528. That's Row 3, Column H on this chart. And for a Title 25 home, to be about $1,717. That's Column H, Row 6. Both would have a 16 cents per square foot added to the base fee. So with a $1,000 subsidy, if you look at the bottom row of Column H, the Title 25 base fee would be about $717. So here's a snapshot of building permit-only costs for both standard residential builds versus Title 25 subsidized fees, just for further comparison. So note that this cost estimate is dependent on school and fire district, location, traffic and park mitigation zones, and does not include grading costs, utility connections or road improvement costs. If you notice on Title 25, again, the top two rows, that totals about $1,006, which the board was talking about a $1,000 goal for an overall building permit fee for Title 25. So as mentioned in June, the proposed subsidized Title 25 fee is estimated to assist between 5 to 10 applicants over the next year. General fund subsidy use can be reported to the Housing Ad hoc as well as at the Board of Supervisor Workshop in January. So if approved today, this fee would go into effect no sooner than 60 days from now and will include an annual inflator. Meanwhile, we're still processing applications at the regular building permit fee rate. So with that, our team's here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was concise. That was brought back from a meeting we had just a couple, just a month ago, I think. So, all right, questions, comments? Rob, I'm going to start with you.
Thanks for that. Can you just explain, like summarize, the difference between just, I guess, reducing the fee versus we're calling it a subsidy? Just from clarification.
Sure. So the fee is based on a time study. It takes staff a certain amount of time to process an application and so that's how we calculate our fees. So you can't just say, do the review in one hour versus two, right? It's still going to take two hours. So that's why we're calling it a subsidy.
Okay. And the fact that Title 25 homes typically are going to be smaller and different in nature, how does that factor in? Because I guess logically thinking it will take less time or whatever, how's that play into that?
Correct. So that's why the fee, if you weren't a subsidy, you know, to provide a subsidy, it's still much less than the regular building permit because we're saying that, we're acknowledging that, that yes, it should be much simpler to review the plans.
So this just goes even further?
Correct.
Okay.
Just curious, have we had anybody apply for this so far?
Yes, we're working on several applications right now. Most of them have come through the Code and Cannabis Compliance Team. Some structures, residential structures were built without permits previously or they were garages or other buildings that have been turned to residential structures and we're trying to help them get through that process at a cheaper rate.
That's fantastic. So is that kind of, so where's that sit? This versus an as-built?
An as-built, you would have to go back, a lot of times we would previously, if you didn't go through the Title 25 process, you went through the regular building process, we would, the policy is to make you have x-rays on your foundation. We have to open up walls potentially to see your structure, so there's a lot of stuff there that we don't require in Title 25.
Okay, thanks. And then again, we talked about this and this was with an estimation of 5 to 10 applications a year. Are we going to cap, is it capped at that?
I don't think so. We're just providing an estimate and I would think 10 would be great if we could get that many. I mean, we're really here, ready to issue building permits. You know, the more work, the better for our building department.
Oh, great, thank you.
Okay, let's open it up to public comment.
Michael Taylor, District 1. I mean, I know this is not the right time to talk about this, but I would like to see some sort of a process for someone that's a senior that's building their last home or their last home, that they somehow can waive the school fee. They're not going to have any more kids, they're not involved with kids and that school fee is a tremendously expensive fee that could be waived if you're a senior. I want to talk about the as-built, I'm sorry, I have to rephrase this, the Title 25 as-built process with code compliance. I don't, I think they're not being entirely transparent with these numbers up here. If it's a code problem, it's going through code, you have to pay twice as much on these fees. So they're saying it's low for the two or three people that may come in under Title 25, building a brand-new home, but they're actually double for somebody coming in trying to get their home built or passed under the as-built process of it. If we want this county to bring in housing that's been built without permits, we need to open the door and say, this is the time to come in and get your house permitted under Title 25 and not make it a punitive response to go after these individuals. They don't, no one feels safe coming in and saying, oh, here's a set of plans, I built this house 10 years ago and now I'd like to, you know, get it finalized as a Title 25. So if you're really serious about getting structures out in the woods that have been built, come into compliance and to be safe with electrical and generators and solar and all the other things that happen with the people that are building homes out in the woods without permits, do like a one-year time or a two-year time that says, please come in now, we're not going to punish you and we're going to help you get through this process. And I highly recommend that the punitive part of it has a window of one year or whatever that people feel safe coming into the county with their structures that are not permitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Any callers?
There's no callers, Chair.
Thanks. Any other public comment? Okay, we're going to close public comment. Did you want to respond to any of that, Tricia, George?
I would just say with the code issues, we have had a few folks come in in the last two years to address unpermitted structures. And our approach, we try to be very collaborative, not be punitive, and so that's why we've had some people go through our as-built process without going through the code process.
Okay, thank you. So we are now back to the board for final comments? Any more comments? Okay. Any other comments?
Just one comment. Thanks, Tricia, and thanks for doing the revision on this after the last meeting. One of my comments is the, some of the lines in the fee estimate we control, some of them are from other jurisdictions that get added into the ad-borum portion or building permit process portion of your taxes. So kind of a call county-wide or regionally, in my opinion, other jurisdictions are going to have to weigh in to reduce fees. We're taking steps to reduce those for our building population on the things that we control. There's others that may have to do the same thing and we would, you know, I think, just as one board member, we all welcome those conversations with other jurisdictions and how we can make it more affordable to bring codes into compliance, to build new homes and to get housing on the ground. So, yeah, I just want to mention that. Thank you.
All right. So looking for a motion and a second to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Thank you, Chair. District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
And District 1.
Yes. Thanks so much, both of you. All right, we're moving on to Item 20, Public Hearing. The continued public hearing pursuant to a motion passed by the Board of Supervisors at the June 24 Board of Supervisors Public Hearing for the Gableman Rezone Project. So we've got the Planning Department coming down and Brian, I'll let you introduce your staff and then we're going to go through a regular public hearing process here.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, board. With me is Zachary Rubal, an Associate Planner in the Planning Department, and he'll give a brief recap and overview of the project. This was a continuation from the June 24, 2025 board meeting where we presented the full project and direction from the board was to come back with resolutions and an ordinance supporting the project. So we'll be brief in our presentation and I'll turn it over to Zachary for the brief presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foss, and thank you, board members, and good morning and thank you everyone for all being here today. As Brian mentioned, my name is Zachary Rubal and I'm an Associate Planner here at the Nevada County Planning Department and the planner for the Gableman Project that was continued on June 24, 2025 in front of the Board of Supervisors today. So the proposed project, it was an application for a general plan amendment and a zoning district map amendment, a tentative parcel map, an oak resources management plan, a water course management plan and a petition for exceptions to fire safe driveway standards. On June 24, 2025, the Board of Supervisors held a duly noticed public hearing to consider the proposed project, including the draft initial study and mitigated negative declaration and then all of the project entitlements that were previously mentioned. After taking public testimony, hearing the staff's presentation, hearing the project applicant and representative's presentation and deliberating on the project, the Board of Supervisors made a motion to continue the public hearing to a later date and provided the Planning Department with direction to come back with project actions to support approval of the proposed Gableman Project. So pursuant to the motion made by the Board of Supervisors, the attached draft resolutions, draft ordinance and draft conditions of approval in support of the Gableman Project have been included as attachments 1 through 5 in the staff report packet. And so therefore, staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors take the following actions, 1 through 4, that are as shown on the screen.
Very brief, thank you. Okay, so a reminder, this is a return of, the direction was to bring it back for approval. So here it is. So any questions or comments from the board? Lisa? Sue? Hardy? Rob? Okay, open up to public comment.
Michael Taylor, District 1. I'll keep it extremely short. I urge you guys to approve the subdivision, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? And I'm sorry, I should have gone to you first, sir. Okay, any callers?
There's no callers, Chair.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment and if you'd like to make a presentation as well.
Sure, I don't have a presentation. My name's Theodore Goodman with Millennium Planning and Engineering, the applicant's representative. I think that the direction of the board to continue the hearing, provided at that hearing, plenty of information on the project, staff incredibly brief. Thank you, Zach. I think you guys have everything you need. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you so much. Any other final comments or questions, board? Okay, great. So then we have to take four separate actions, so I'm going to look for a motion and a second on each. And Julie, do you need me to go slower on these or help you with the who's making the motion in the second?
Yes, if we just go a little slow, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. I realize that. All right.
Trying to keep up here.
Okay, so I am first looking for a motion to approve the resolution adopting a mitigated negative declaration for the proposed Gableman Project.
So moved. Second.
That was Hook and Swarthout. Roll call, please.
Sorry, Chair. District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
And District 1.
Yes. Great, thank you. Second motion is a move to adopt the attached resolution approving amending the general plan land use map designation from rural with a minimum parcel size of 20 acres to rural with a minimum parcel size of 10 acres of APN 060, 150, 063, based on the findings contained with the draft resolution.
So moved Hook. Second.
Hook and Swarthout.
Thank you. District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
District 1.
Yes. The third motion is to introduce and waive further reading and adopt an ordinance amending zoning district map number 37 to rezone assessors parcel number 060, 150, 063 from general agricultural, with a general agriculture with a minimum parcel size of 20 acres to general agriculture with a minimum parcel size of 10 acres, based on the findings contained with the draft ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Hook and Swarthout.
District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
District 1.
Yes. All right, and the final motion, see if you guys can be faster than these people guys over here. The fourth action is to move to approve the resolution approving the proposed tentative parcel map, water course management plan, oak resources management plan and petition for exceptions to the fire safe driveway standards based on the findings contained with the draft resolution.
So moved.
Second.
How about that bubble again, Tucker?
Switching it up. District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
And District 1.
Yes. Great. So thank you, everyone. That was the quickest public hearing ever and congratulations. All right, folks, do you need a break? Anybody need a break? Right now or 11? 11, right now? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break and then we'll be back. Thank you.
I'm one minute early, but it'll take me that long to read this. We're back for our item, our scheduled 11 o'clock, item number 22. The item is to introduce and waive further reading and ordinance amending sections 1302-120C, 1302-130C, and 1302-140C of Chapter 2 of Title 13 of the Nevada County Code subdivisions, increasing the initial approval period for tentative maps from 36 months to 48 a month as allowed by the State Subdivision Map Act. And again, this is a return item from one that we had previously. No, not this one. It came from one or the other. Okay. We talked about it. Right. Okay. So I will turn it over to Brian or Tyler to make a presentation.
Sure. Thank you, Chair Hall. Good morning again. With me is Tyler Barrington, our Principal Planner, and he'll go over a presentation regarding the ordinance before you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors, Tyler Barrington, Principal Planner, and Interim Director of Housing. The item for your consideration today is an update to the county subdivision regulations as it relates to the timelines for the approval of approved tentative maps. For some brief background, in 2006, the Board of Supervisors extended the initial review period for tentative maps from 24 months to 36 months as allowed for by the State Subdivision Map Act. That ordinance was, has been in place since that time. The county's code allows for the original 36 months once a tentative map is approved, whether it's a tentative final map or a tentative final map or a tentative parcel map. A tentative parcel map being three lots or less, or four lots or less as approved by the county zoning administrator, or a five or more lots which is approved by the county planning commission. The code allows for two extensions of time, so three, of three years each, so nine years total with extensions. And I put a little asterisk there because the state throughout time has passed several automatic extensions that apply to all maps if they meet certain criteria. The State Subdivision Map Act is the state statute for standards and timelines associated with maps, and the county ordinance helps implement those requirements. I mentioned those periodic automatic extensions. And specifically, government code section 66452.6 outlines the ability for the initial review period, or the initial approval period where a project can meet all of its conditions of approval and then submit a map check for recordation. This draft ordinance is a result of discussions with the county housing ad hoc committee. It's kind of the result of a recent development agreement, an ongoing housing crisis. Instead of negotiating with developers, the idea here is to provide for additional time for maps. Staff was directed to look at the potential for providing automatic extensions similar to the subdivision map act, and working with county council has determined that that's not our role. However, it was pointed out that we do have the ability to go from 36 months to 48 months for that initial approval period. So what is proposed for the board today would be go to allow for an approved tentative map and the initial onset to go from 36 months to 48 months, so three, from three years to four years. We would keep the extensions of time to be the same, so it'll allow for two additional three-year extensions of time that are approved either at the zoning administrator or the planning commission, depending on the type of map. And then this will allow for 10 years total for a map. So it would give an additional one year of time to maps. And then, and the way that staff will be allocating this is this would apply to any map that's currently existing and has yet, not yet expired, and it would go into effect, essentially, apply to any map that hasn't yet expired as of September 12th to 2025. So essentially, what staff is recommending is that you introduce and waive further reading. This project would come back before, if approved by the board, would come back before you had a future date for final adoption of this ordinance amending section 13.02120C, 13.02130C, and then 1302-140C. And what those reference are a tentative parcel map, which is four lots or less, a tentative final map, which is five lots or more, and then an environmental subdivision, which are three types of maps approved by the county. So it's specifically the same language in all of those timeline sections. It just applies to all those maps. So with that, staff would turn it over to the board and open to any questions of the board.
Thank you, Tyler. Any questions from the board? Rob, start with you. No? Cardi?
Thanks, Tyler. One of the questions I had was, would any of the modifications to this ordinance change the way that the conditions of approval fell onto the entitlement? Would it change? I think you understand what I'm asking, right?
Supervisor Bullock, my assumption is the conditions of approval will be the same for any map. We'd process the same way. It would just allow for additional time.
Okay. So it, would the, would a neighbor or somebody have the right to appeal, to request additional conditions of approval based on change?
Based on what's proposed today, it's specifically a change to the subdivision ordinance, and it would apply across all of the maps that we currently have approved, or, and future maps.
Okay. So he is just, is just a time. It's just a time period. Nothing else changes?
Correct. Yeah. The intent was to provide for additional time for our maps to allow for, hopefully, some of them to record and provide more potential units.
If there's, are there any code changes that would trigger a map having to drop out? So for example, if the road width changes or fire requirements changed, is there anything that, I think the general answer is no, but is there anything special?
Generally, no. I mean, I think if a map was approved under certain conditions and they're required to meet certain improvements at the time of their approval, then that would still apply.
So I just am curious. So I know we've got some maps that are probably in those timelines. What about ones that had septic systems embedded in them?
So that would be a requirement of the environmental health department, but if they were approved and demonstrated that they had adequate resources at the time of their approval, then they'd still be able to move forward. A typical condition for our environmental health on a septic system map is if they aren't able to demonstrate adequate resources, then they would either combine with an existing lot to provide more area. But generally, with most maps, they're required to do what a minimum usable septic disposal area or a MUZDA that demonstrates that they have those resources on site.
Okay, let's open up public comment.
I'll keep it short. I definitely am supportive of anything that helps create housing, even if it's kicking the can down the road with giving these people more time with their, their site maps. My only caution is the approved site maps with the conditions with joint or shared septic systems or shared wells. I mean, those, those are starting to create issues for the county having shared wells and shared septic systems. So that would be my only caution is to making sure that if there were conditions of approval that included shared wells or shared septic systems, that we take a better look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in the chambers? Any callers?
There's no callers for this item, Chair.
Okay. Closed public comment and back to the board. Tyler, did you want to respond to that comment?
Just that, you know, what's before the board today is specific to timelines with maps and not related to existing conditions or environmental health regulations.
Great. Okay. Any final questions, comments? Okay, then I'm looking for a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second?
Tucker and Swarthout.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
For clarification, it's introduce and waive further reading. The adoption will come at a future date.
Sorry about that. It's not on my, yep. And, okay. Introduce and waive, we can still have this motion. It's just to introduce and waive further reading. So we had Tucker and Swarthout. Is that correct? Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Thank you. District 5.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
And District 1.
Yes. Thank you. Well done. All right. Now we're going to move on to item 23. Do I have that right? Yep. Resolution approving the addition of delinquent community development agency assessments onto the 2025-26 secured property tax rule continued from the June 24th, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting. I see Matt and Tricia and Doug. Thank you. Why don't you go ahead and start?
Thank you. And good morning, Chair Hall and Supervisors. Tricia Tillotson, again, your Community Development Agency Director, along with Matt Kelly, our Code and Cannabis Compliance Director, Ashley Fucci with the Treasurer Tax Collector's Office, Gina Will, our Auditor Controller, and Doug Johnson with County Council. We have additional staff here as well if there's any questions for us. And this is a continuation of the June 24th discussion regarding placing delinquent CDA assessments on the secured property tax rule. So we're here today to answer questions from that June 24th meeting and provide clarification on the legal authority for cost recovery of assessments, to provide an overview of the code violation case process, to discuss the code assessment recovery timeline, to discuss due process and appeal rights, to clarify the benefits of the assessment process, and to hear an overview of the property tax billing and collection cycle. This item was able to be brought back within 60 days so that if approved, the delinquent assessments can be included in the 25-26 secured property tax rule. Lastly, we'll end the presentation with a summary and recommendations slide and are available to answer any additional questions. So with that, I'll pass it to Matt. Matt?
Thank you, Tricia. Chair Hall, members of the Nevada County Board of Supervisors, Matt Kelly, Director of Code and Cannabis Compliance. So a discussion about the legal authority for special assessments. So Nevada County Code Section 1205220 authorizes the county to recover and, to recover unpaid enforcement-related costs by placing them on the secured tax rule as a special assessment. This does mirror authority granted under state law and ensures consistency with administrative cost recovery practices statewide. The properties are not liens, but special assessments, which are collected as part of the annual property tax bill. Special assessments, unlike liens, do not encumber the property title like a recorded lien would. They do not create a recorded interest in the property also like a lien would as well. They do, the assessments are fiscal obligations which are tied to a single tax year. Once they're paid, they are removed from the direct charges that show up on the property tax bill. They provide a streamlined cost recovery tool without creating a recorded legal burden or delaying property transfers. Unlike liens, do they not, they do not require a formal release, and they do not persist beyond the collection period of the tax rule. So once they're paid, they are removed. The process provides an efficient and equitable cost recovery mechanism without requiring judicial property, judicial filings or property lien filings. One, other, other properties, only properties with unresolved code violation cases and unpaid county incurred enforcement costs are eligible for placement on the tax rule. The approach to this ensures a proper fiscal responsibility and is consistent with the policies and adopted by many other California counties, which Ashley will, will discuss later on in the presentation. Some examples of some other jurisdictions that do, do participate in this includes the Nevada Irrigation District, the Truckee Tahoe Public Utility District, and then just recently, the City of Grass Valley just passed their assessments on the tax rule as well. So a little bit of a discussion on the code violation case process, and then I'll discuss the invoicing and assessment process, and then our 30, 16, 90-day noticing and letters. So the code case process begins with the submission of an investigative services request, or ISR. This is done through public complaint or through a, this is done through, through public complaint. This can be done online or submitted at our counter. Co-compliance officers do go out and conduct a site visit, and they document any violations through field notes and photographs. Once the violations are confirmed, the department issues a violation warning letter. This does include a defined compliance timeline and information about appeal rights. We do include the same information about appeal rights in all of our letters. A citation warning letter follows this typically 30 days' letter if we do not hear from the property owner and they're not working towards bringing their property into compliance. The, we do offer additional time to comply, typically additional 30 days beyond this. And then we move into the administrative citation stage, who are about 90 days into the process at this point. We issue a, we'll issue a citation letter, which does offer additional appeal rights and additional opportunity to appeal the citation. From here, we will then generally start assessing staff time and staff costs for this, for the enforcement of, trying to bring the property into compliance. Administrative citations are issued as a final step before, before we send out, start sending out invoices. These do include appeal rights again and the consequences of non, of continued non-compliance. Invoices for staff time and first-related costs are only issued once violations, of course, are confirmed and we're moving, continuing on to the code violation case process. A little bit about invoicing and assessment processes. So staff costs such as inspection, these are for staff costs such as inspections, case management, and administrative overhead as well that are documented and included in the invoice to the property owner. These do accompany the citation letter as well, so these do come to the property owner together. They're not generally mailed separately. The invoice outlines the total costs incurred and provides, provide for opportunity for voluntary payment. And again, the, the information is included about how to appeal the, not only the citation, but the invoice as well. CDA compiles an all delinquent account, or CDA compiles a list of all delinquent accounts annually, and then we bring this forward to the Board of Supervisors, which I'll discuss more in the next slide. This step ensures that collection efforts are consolidated, they're transparent, and they are subject to Board of Supervisors approval. And then a little bit about our 30, 16, 90-day and follow-up, and then placement on the, to collections. County follows a, we follow a typical three-tiered noticing structure to encourage payment of invoices. We send out an initial invoice, which is 30 days. That does include a reminder to pay, 60-day, and then finally a 90-day. After 120 days, we will generally refer the unpaid accounts to collections, and we do contract with professional services credit for, for collections. We, once the invoice does get referred to collections, we add a 7% administrative cost or charge to the, to the invoice to support collections costs. And if they're paid, the collections agency takes 16% of the total invoice amount. If the, once they stay in collections for a year, and not all invoices go through collections, they, depends on when they're placed and when they're subject to, to collections or subject to payment. The original invoice amount is then given back to the department, and that's what we bring forward to the Board of Supervisors for your consideration. CDA continues to support owners during this time by providing account details and payment options. And then we do offer compliance agreements and other things that we, we can offer to help resolve a code violation case before we get to this point of bringing the cost to the Board of Supervisors. So a little bit of how we actually come to, to the board. So the tax replacement process is typically done once a year, generally begins in March, and it aligns, needs to align with county's statutory deadlines for placement on the tax rule. A community development agency compiles and submits a list of eligible delinquent accounts regardless of their current collection status for board consideration each year. We've done this consistently for about the last 12 years. This ensures timely cost recovery, fiscal accountability, and it avoids delays that could compromise enforcement outcomes. Submitting all qualifying cases together ensures timeliness and avoids delays that could extend the cost recovery time. The annual cycle helps prevent property transfers from occurring to, prior to cost recovery. This helps to ensure accountability and supports fiscal sustainability for the department and then also for, for the property owner. Timely placement of the delinquent costs on the tax rule, on the secured property tax rule reduces impacts on the general fund by ensuring that property owners are violators, not the general taxpayers, pay for these enforcement-related costs while also continuing to support the timely resolution of unresolved code violation cases. So a little bit of discussion on due process and appeal rights. Property owners receive notification at every step, from the initial violation warning letter all the way through to invoicing and finally, final assessment. All notices do include appeal rights and opportunities to clarify or contest the county's findings. These appeals go to a neutral third-party hearing officer, and that process is included in Nevada County Code. Most other jurisdictions operate this way as well. Before any cost is placed on this tax rule, CDA sends, we do send a file, a final notice of intent to collect, offering one last opportunity for administrative, to, to resolve the administrative costs. And according to Nevada County Code, only properties with unresolved violations and unpaid costs are eligible for, for placement and assessment. This process ensures fairness, compliance with legal standards, and supports public trust in local enforcement actions. So the benefit of this, of this process, so special assessments ensure that cost of enforcement is borne by violators and not general, general taxpayers. Process promotes fairness, program integrity, cost recovery, reinforcing financial sustainability of the code and compliance program, and ensures that costs are, are paid for by, by the violators themselves. Enforcement costs are tied to responsible parcel, or responsible parcels, deterring future violations and supporting consistent application of county standards. Recovered funds enable CDA to continue providing enforcement services through, that protect neighborhoods, neighborhood safety, property values, and land use regulations. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ashley Fucci for a discussion on placement on the tax rule.
Good morning, Chair Hall and members of the board. My name is Ashley Fucci, Administrative Analyst with the Treasurer Tax Collector's Office here today on beha-
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Here on behalf of Treasurer Tax Collector, Michelle Botley. Today, I'll provide a brief overview of the tax billing, property tax billing and collection cycle, as well as the implications of adding CDA assessments to the rule. To understand the impact of adding CDA assessments to the tax rule, first, we need to understand the property tax and billing collection cycle. In July through August, the Auditor Controller finalizes and extends the secured property tax rule by adding special assessments and direct charges. The rule is then turned over to the tax collector for billing and collection. In October, the tax collector mails out the annual secured property tax bills to all property owners. Property taxes are paid in two installments. The first installment is due on December 10th. The second is due on April 10th. If either of these installments remain unpaid, there's a 10% penalty added to the balance. Annually, on July 1st, any unpaid taxes, assessments, penalties, and costs are declared defaulted under Revenue and Taxation Code Section 3436. This begins a five-year redemption process. On July 1st, at 12:01 a.m., in the fifth year of default, the property becomes subject to the tax collector's power to sell, initiating the auction process. Now that you have a brief overview of the overall tax cycle, let's look at how property owners would see a delinquent CDA assessment reflected on their bill. Taxpayers will see any added CDA or other special assessments under the direct charges portion of their bill. Once a delinquent CDA assessment is added to the bill, one of the most common questions we receive is whether that amount can be paid separately. The answer is no. Once added, the delinquent assessment becomes part of the total tax obligation and must be paid together. Beyond the property owner, lenders also have a vested interest in the status of property taxes. This raises an important question. Are lenders notified when delinquent charges are added to the tax bill? The answer again is no. The Tax Collector's Office does not directly notify lenders about delinquent tax bills. However, many lenders proactively monitor the tax collector's website and may request status updates on the properties they manage. Regardless of who is monitoring the bill, the responsibility to pay ultimately falls on the property owner. So what happens if someone falls behind on their taxes? If a taxpayer falls behind on their taxes, we strongly encourage them to contact the collector's office as soon as possible to explore available payment plan and assistance options. Payment plans for defaulted taxes can be established between July 15th and June 30th of each fiscal year. Now let's look at the specific life cycle of the 25-26 tax bill with a CDA assessment added. If a CDA assessment is added to the 25-26 tax bill, it will appear on the bill sent in October of 2025. If unpaid, the taxes become delinquent on April 11th of 2026 and enter default on July 1 of 2026. Property owners will have until June 30th, 2031, to resolve the delinquency before the property becomes subject to power to sell on July 1st of 2031 and eligible for tax auction in November of 2031. It's important to note that the initial year of default establishes when a parcel becomes eligible for tax sale. As a result, prior delinquencies may accelerate a property's eligibility for tax auction. Before any tax sale occurs, the Tax Collector's Office issues multiple communications throughout the year to inform taxpayers of their payment status. These include reminder letters sent in January and May, payment plan opportunity notices sent in July, as well as a three-year publication published in the union in September. Once a property becomes eligible for tax sale, several additional notices are required by law, ensuring multiple layers of communication and due process are provided to taxpayers. The practice of adding CDA assessments to the tax rule is not new, as the table here shows. Since 2018, 141 CDA assessments have been added to the tax rule affecting 95 parcels. Of these assessments, 111 have been paid, 24 remain outstanding, and only four vacant land parcels have proceeded to tax sale. It's important to note that of the 95 affected parcels, nearly 90% already had outstanding property taxes when the CDA assessments were added. This reinforces that- This reinforces that CDA assessments are rarely the sole cause of tax default. While the previous slide highlights the number of delinquent CDA assessments added to the tax rule and the outcomes of those cases since 2018, it's also helpful to consider the financial scale of these charges. This chart breaks down the dollar amounts of assessments added since 2018, most of which have been modest, with the majority falling below $2,000. That concludes my presentation, and I'll now turn it over to Tricia and Matt for final remarks and any questions.
So, thank you, Ashley and Matt. In summary, compliance processes, notices, and appeal procedures have been followed, yet costs remain unpaid. Multiple opportunities to remedy violations have been provided. The referenced assessments are lawful and fair, and placing these outstanding costs on the secured tax rule is an effective cost recovery tool. As such, staff are recommending that the Board adopt the resolution in your packet, approving the placement of the delinquent assessments on the 2526 secured property tax rule. So, thank you, and we're available if you have any questions.
Thank you, all of you, for that very thorough explanation about how this works. I'll turn it to my colleagues first for questions and comments. Hardee?
I don't, I, I was one of the, I was one of the requesters to pull it and have some of this clarified, and I appreciate all your efforts to bring all this information forward. I understand everything in front of me. I don't have any specific questions. I just had one kind of reiterate component, but once an invoice, the total timeline, because the EU offered a couple of different timelines, and they all made sense to me, but just so maybe the listeners at home or other people in the audience, once somebody's issued an invoice, i.e. you have an invoice for an enforcement activity, how long until, how long does a property owner have until it actually gets applied to the tax rule that you pointed out for us in the bill? What's that total end-to-end time length?
Chair Hall, Supervisor Bullock. So, it'll depend on when the invoice is issued. Typically, there's a 30-day period to pay, and so generally, the entire process, if we issued an invoice at, once we issued the citation, so we're 90 days into the process, it's about two years from, from when that invoice is issued to, if it goes through collections to be brought to the Board of Supervisors.
Two years.
Thank you.
No, I, I appreciate the fact that we brought this back. I think it was, this was a great presentation. I think it dove way into more of the details, and so I think that was very helpful, so thank you for that.
Great, thank you. Let's open it up for public comment.
Hi, Mike Hamick, Carolina Contractor. Grew up here, have built many, many homes, increasing your guys' tax base by millions of dollars. Why are you trying to pass this, SR 251750, when it's already happened to me? Code enforcement was personally weaponized to come after myself, family, multiple properties, business, and criminal charges, all on the same day. This resulted in contested fines, countless meetings that went nowhere, resulted in being put on multiple property tax bills, went to pay property taxes with a letter, taxes paid, making statement with no fines. Check was returned, not paid in full, 10% late fee was added. This happened twice. This resulted in my mortgage company getting involved, payment went from $800 a month from a house I built with my two hands 20-plus years ago to $2,600 a month. By the grace of God, I was able to end this extortion by paying off my mortgage. With SR 251750, this would allow county to enforce contested, contested code violation fines to our property tax bill, end result, auctioning off our home via tax auction, via sheriff, removing us from our home, ending result if this passes. As I'm here telling a small part of my story that has been ruining our life for over five years with meetings going nowhere, Allison, you, George, everyone in here, amazing. Remember, you work for us, not against us, bottom line, and I say this with respect to you guys. I'm, I'm heated over this, this has ruined my life. I grew up here, my wife is sixth generation with pictures of her grandfather in the emperor mine with a donkey, and you people are trying to pass this on we the people. It, it's amazing. I'd be happy to sit down, good, I got a minute, I'd be happy to sit down with any of you, got a picture book explaining SMU, shit made up. Craig Griesbach personally attacked me, and hopefully you guys make the right decision. Thank you.
Michael Taylor, District One. My problem started in September 2019. Craig Griesbach weaponized code compliance. He empowered Jeff Merriman, David Kopp, to ruin my life. I have spent since that time to this current date trying to resolve all the issues respectfully on my property with, with the same people, and it's not, they didn't, they didn't respond in a way to resolve the issues. They continue to weaponize it. How my problem started, I almost forgot the most important part. I decided to run for supervisor. I met with Barbara Bashwell at the, at the Contractors Association. Craig Griesbach had a satellite station inside their office at that time, overhearing my meeting that I'm thinking about running for supervisor. My life was turned upside down in that moment. It is ridiculous what I have gone through in that period of time and what I have seen, how my life has been completely turned upside down by this. Right now, I just did an administrative hearing, which is, it violates all due process. It was based on information from a drone flying over my tenant's property, again, violating all due process. I am currently suing the county, and the county is currently suing me for the $7,000. I'm on that list for the $7,000. The, I was billed, like they said, on whatever it is, they give you a notice, you're going to be in the, in the tax system if you don't pay this. I literally got a, a, an invoice a few weeks later, shortly after the county, the county filed lawsuit in October. I did my counter-suit in November or December, something like that. They are just starting to bill me, and they're already suing me for the, for the $7,000, and it's still, it's still in a lawsuit. It's not, we haven't even resolved it yet, and I'm on this list. So, this is, there is so much wrong with this system from the beginning to the end, weaponizing code compliance, the billing process, inability to resolve these issues. Allison herself in 2020 said, "That looks like a reasonable solution for dealing with all of the issues on your property." Nope, didn't happen. Negotiated with the county council for three years, came up with ideas, they had ideas, very end, nope, we don't agree to reasonable ways to solve the, my, my case. Kit Elliott herself said to my attorney, "How do you defend that kind of a person? How do you, how do you wake up defending those kind of people?" This is retaliation, it's lawfare, it's estapo, I mean, it's all, this system is effed up, and it's affecting people's lives, and I shouldn't be on that list. Thank you.
Yeah, good morning, Board. I'm Paul Gilbert, and I'm no stranger to this Board, so hear me well. This ordinance, SR 251750, may seem like local housekeeping tool, but it presents a constitutional hazard. Let me make the parallel clear. When the Security and Exchange Commission, a federal agency, tried to assess penalties against an individual without a trial by jury, the U.S. Supreme Court stepped in. SCC versus Jarski's, decided in 2024, affirmed what has always been true under the Seventh Amendment, that any monetary penalty exceeding $20 must be tried before a jury in an Article III court. Why does this matter here? Because a county government like the SEC is merely a creature of statute, created by the state, bound by the Constitution. The difference is only in jurisdiction, not in authority. When this Board authorizes an agency to assess administrative fines and then directs the tax collector to add those fines to the property tax rule, it is no different than the SEC trying to collect without due process. Now, let's address the statutes being used to justify this. The county relies on Government Code 25845 and 53069 dot four. These are being misread. And 25845, Section D, allows the county to recover costs of abatement, things like cleanup and remediation, not arbitrary administrative fines. And in 53069 dot four, there is no language permitting lien placement or tax sale for unpaid fines. So, by doing so, you're violating the law, you're violating the Constitution. Not only that, you're violating your oath of office, where you made an oath to uphold the Constitution, the Constitution, a trust document. You are trustees, you are breaching your trust. And if county council believes that the county is exempt from Jarski or from the Seventh Amendment, I ask one thing, produce the ruling from the United States Supreme Court that grants counties the power to ignore the Constitution. Because if that ruling does not exist, then every penalty added to the tax bill through administrative action without judgment, without a jury, is unconstitutional. The Board took the oath, the oath binds you not just as elected officials, but as trustees of the people's rights. You are trustees of due process, not enforcers of policy convenience, and I say this with clarity and respect. If this ordinance moves forward as written, the county will see its day in court. You will be asked to defend not just your vote, but your legal reasoning as to why the Constitution no longer applies in Nevada County. Govern yourself accordingly.
My name's Misty Lee, District One, and I am also on the list. Dear Supervisors, I urge you to not pass SR 251750. This resolution is-
I can hear you.
I urge you to not pass SR 251750. The resolution is not routine, it's controversial, unconstitutional, and sets a dangerous precedent. A Nevada County Code Compliance Officer, David Kopp, drove onto my property through locked gates, clearly marked private property, no trespassing. He was led by a woman who was homeless, someone we had allowed temporary use of shower facilities. She had no authority to allow access. The officer entered my home without a warrant, peeked through windows into occupied bedrooms where he was caught by a tenant inside. This was a blatant violation of the Fourth Amendment rights and reflects the unchecked power SR 251750 would legalize. Now, the county wants to attach unverified administrative charges from warning violations like the one I received, that, the one I received from the unlawful entry directly to our property tax bill without court oversight. That opens the door to liens, penalties, and foreclosures based on accusations alone. Matt Kelly claims that this is something that the Board, something that they bring to the Board every year, yet I have found no meeting where this was discussed or approved. There is no transparency. Let's be honest, for those who have challenged the code compliance through administrative hearings are the ones that are being targeted. Only two people have stood up recently in the last few years and were, and are now the ones facing retaliation, mass dispolicy. Other counties do not do this, Mr. Kelly, as he stated. In Alameda County, similar costs are only added after tax rules, after hearings and legal findings. Sonoma, Santa Clara, Contra Conti counties require court judgments or liens, not arbitrary invoices. What you're proposing in SR 251750, placing unverified administrative charges on the tax rule without due process, is something I've yet to find anywhere else in California counties. Government Code 25845D does not authorize this. It applies to nuisance, nuisance abatements, not code violations or invoices. It doesn't override Article 13D or the Fourteenth Amendment. I respectfully urge you to do not pass SR 251750. Do we have any callers, Madam Clerk?
Chair, we do have one caller.
Okay, we'll take the caller and then we'll come back into the chambers.
Can we bring the caller in, please?
Yeah, I heard a beep, I think I'm on, am I on? Hello?
We can hear you.
Anybody, okay, very good. I can't hear you, so I don't know, and I can't see you, so I don't know. Some words that came up in the little presentation was supports public trust and word fairness. Neither of these things apply. I would like our elected officials or appointed officials and employees of the county to disclose if they are behind on their taxes, because other counties have done this, and it's amazing how many people that are telling people to do things are not doing them themselves. Such a degree that the hypocrisy has lost the trust of the public. The public looks at this type of thing, knowing we're the highest elder population per capita, knowing that we're in a financial bind due to many reasons, most of all, management, and they are now going to become homeless for one reason or another. And you say this is a two-year process, but I watched a 30-day process, and that was a eminent domain case for the sinkhole in Grass Valley for Trips Auto Body. The city was going to take their land, but I gave them photographic and video evidence showing that Tim Kaiser, the city manager of Grass Valley, caused the sinkhole, and he ended up getting his $400,000 for his piece of property instead of stealing it from him. So, this type of targeting of people, and, oh, and since I talked to you just a few minutes ago in public comment, I heard on the scanner that the mayor of Grass Valley said that I violated my restraining order against her. So, this weaponizing of government against the people. I haven't seen that drunk woman in months and months. I see her at the city council meetings on video, yet she has the balls to call up and report that I somehow have done something wrong to her. You guys are doing wrong to the community, you're doing wrong to the citizens, and this is a scam. This is a property grab. Why not go after the developers that are behind on their taxes? They have huge tracts of land that have huge fire problems with the homeless. It's not a fair playing field. You're going after the little guy, just like you did with the pot thing, and look what you did to that. You turned into a criminal enterprise by micromanaging every little six-plant pot farm in Nevada County. And we still haven't made enough money from the taxes on that to even pay for the staff that manages it. It's outrageous what you guys have done and continue to do and think that you're doing the people's work, when the reality is you're going against the people. And if you follow the money, it goes-
Okay, any public, more public comment in the chambers?
Ray Shipley, I'm in District Five and on the line with District One. In the last Board of Supervisors meeting, the Board of Supervisors tabled the issues with respect to this for 60 days. Who overruled the Board of Supervisors in that decision? We were going to get a white paper. Where is it? Is it the 11-page thing? Putting this issue on today's agenda appears to be a bait and switch. If you vote to pass this resolution today, you are voting for a lack of truthfulness and a lack of transparency. You will be giving we the people the platform to call you liars, because that is what people who lie, maliciously lie, are called. I have a specific issue. It's funny, I heard the same names, Craig Griesbach and David Kopp. My issue is, I'm not on the roll, fortunately, but I was accused of a grading code violation on our private road where we were conducting maintenance on our private road. Code compliance does not follow their procedures. That's not true. I, I'm here to tell you, I don't have a notice of violation, and it's been since 2019. Show me one or corrective action. I respectfully request that, in the interest of transparency and honesty, extend the tabling of this resolution for another 60 days, starting today. Anything less will be a vote for dishonesty, untruthfulness, and a lack of transparency. Thank you. Thank you.
Before the time starts, can I get the tally on... before the time starts, can I get the tally on for and against from the...
No, this is just public comment. We're just listening right now, and then we'll respond when everybody's done.
I want the tally.
That's not what we're doing. You have three minutes for your public comment.
We're pretty clear on what you're doing. Luke 1152, woe on to you lawyers, for you have stolen the key of knowledge. Sorry, I'm a little nervous right now. I'm emotional and nervous. My family's been through a lot. Four people lost their homes, and it breaks my heart. You lied, Kit. You lied, Doug. People lost their home. Last month, you listened to the will of the people and tabled this item for 60 days, SR 251750. I'm hearing an echo. I don't know why. Reviewing the public comments submitted to BOS from a records request, it was clear that 99% of the people were staunchly opposed. This alone should have solved the controversy. County attorneys lied to the Board and to the people about the potential impact leading to a tax sale of private property. The public is outraged. To make matters worse, the staff who are subordinate to the supervisors and to the people defiantly rejected your order and bought it back for consideration before 60 days. This is unacceptable. Matrician, the attorneys who wrote this document in support of the resolution must face the consequences for their actions. They are pushing to meet a deadline that would violate the protected rights of the people to meet a statutory deadline. The 11-page document is deeply flawed, and the attorneys and staff are pressing you to pass a resolution that is unconstitutional on its face. Conspiring against the people and warring against the Constitution, the Supreme Court and the United States see the United States. Douglas Johnson stated on June 24th, "Courts have reviewed this process in depth and found it to be supportive by law." Nowhere in the document does it address the Constitution... nowhere in the document are there any court decisions. The document does not address the constitutionality of the resolution because it violates the Constitution. All statutes must be in pursuance to the Constitution, Doug, Kit. The legal authority is flawed. The Constitution takes precedence over government and county codes. You do not take your oath to a government code. You take your oath to the Constitution. They're relying on government codes. Staff are salaried. Whether they are outright in citations or, in my case, driving three hours to an unlawful welfare check harassing my family, time comes from the same source. Hence, it doesn't place an additional strain.
Go ahead and take a few more minutes, a few more, like another minute. Everyone has managed it in three minutes, so take another minute, please, and then finish. Thank you.
Staff are salaried, whether they are writing citations or, in my case, driving three... I told us that before. Hence, it doesn't place an additional strain or impose anything on the taxpayers. Administrative costs are not included to the government code that is cited. 25845D, there is not expressly authorized, as the attorneys assert. D, if the owner fails to pay the cost of abatement upon demand. It does not say administrative costs. Please read the code. Do you see administrative costs in that code? No. Attorneys rely on fabricated language stating due process, protection, and administrative efficiency. This is an oxymoron. As held in Jarkeski, the article is a restraint on the legislative as well as the executive and judicial powers of the government and cannot be so construed to leave Congress free to make any process, due process, a law. It's by its mere will. These are cited in my letter. Ad hoc adjudication procedures before the same agency responsible for an administrative law subject only to hands-off judicial review. The point is, Article III court is mandatory. This has been ruled on by the Supreme Court. This means due process cannot be determined by an agency, and hearing officers cannot determine the law or the rights or people's rights. Providing a hearing officer is a violation of due process. Please read the law. Fake court, fake rules to benefit the agency. This framework provides a clear, lawful, and equitable mechanism for cost recovery? That's false. That is absolutely false. It violates Section 13D of the Constitution.
Okay, thank you. It's been more than a minute. Thank you. Please take your seat, and the next person can make their comment.
Time and time again, it's getting so tiring coming here and having to defend ourselves from a weaponized government. And I want to talk about the weaponization of this government through this code compliance.
We want to make sure that you have... I'm sorry. We want to make sure you have your full three minutes, so let's go ahead and make sure we reset the clock for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That'd be great. My name's Renette Senham.
Renette, give us one second, please.
My name is Renette Senham, former, two-time mayor and city council member. And again, I come here usually when I see weaponization going on. And I'm going to digress five years back and talk about what this kind of code compliance weaponization does to us and the aftermath. And the ironic timing we have right now, where you're going to now actually seize, unconstitutionally seize, people's property at a time where they're suffering economically because of your decision-making. So five years ago, when COVID struck, we fought not just to protect ourselves from all of you, our county representatives, including you, excluding you, Mr. Tucker, but to save you from ourselves. During that time, like today, you ignored your oath of office, stripped away our rights, lied to us. Back then, you shut down businesses, churches, schools, and parks, destroyed the fabric of this community, and you cattle-shooted your friends, colleagues, and neighbors into a so-called solution, a bioweapon shot, unconstitutionally. I was the mayor then, and time and time again, I watched you, Allison Lehman, and you, Heidi Hall, shut down my questions during our weekly emergency government Zoom calls, effectively not allowing anyone to question your hostile takeover of this county, which all but, again, you, Mr. Tucker, allowed to happen. So where are we today? Well, we now have peer-reviewed VAERS analysis confirming that shocking neurological harms tied to these injections harms you force upon this community and ironically upon yourselves. The CDC, FDA, safety monitoring thresholds were breached when comparing the mRNA shot to the flu shot, meaning adverse events were reported far more often after the mRNA injection than the flu shot. So for those of you who took the COVID shot, where are we today because of your decision-making, because of you forcing us into no other option through your code compliance? We now have psychosis, the flu shot compared to the mRNA shot. We now have psychosis as 440 times more likely if you took the mRNA shot, which you all took, by the way. We couldn't even save yourselves. Dementia is 140 times more likely. Schizophrenia, 350 times more likely. Suicidal thoughts, 150 times. Homicidal ideation, 25 times. Brain clots, 3,000 times. Depression, 530 times. Violent behavior, 80 times. Cognitive decline, 150 times. And delusion, 50 times more likely. And I think most of you are delusional these days who are representing us. I think that this has actually had an effect on your decision-making, your minds, and definitely your souls, from what I'm seeing. This is what you've done to yourselves, and I wouldn't want to be in your shoes. So basically, today, we're stuck with this, and now we have SR 151750, and you're at it again by ignoring us, playing God with our lives, ignoring our constitutional rights, and you're going to actually seize property at a time after five years of suffering from your bad decision-making, from five years lying to us, not representing us. You should be ashamed of yourselves. I cannot believe I once called many of you friends. I cannot believe it. And stop scrolling.
Are there any other callers, Julie?
There's no other callers, Chair. Thank you.
Come on down. We're still open for public comment. We're going to keep it to three minutes. Please keep it to the topic.
Judy Ballantyne, Rough and Ready. I don't usually express myself here.
Chair Hall, I'm so sorry.
Just wait a minute. I'm sorry. One moment. We want to make sure you get your three minutes also. Let's see what the issue is.
I won't need three.
Okay. Go ahead.
There was a thorough explanation, definitely, but thorough explanations are not always I found out about this meeting this last evening, and I had to come. I saw the title up on the board, "Legal Authority for Special Assessments." To me, that was a red flag. Due process and appeal rights. Is there anybody in this room that wants to pay more taxes?
Any other public comment in the chambers?
Yes, indeed, public comment. I'm Marsha Ann, and I came to remind you of the structure of this government. We, the states have, in the federal constitution, delegated limited powers and in the Tenth Amendment, reserved the powers, not delegated to the states or to the people. In the U.S., in the state constitution, the people have delegated limited powers to their government and reserved the rest to themselves as the sovereign people in the Constitution. You all have taken an oath to both of those constitutions. And you have in that not only a legal authority, but a lawful authority, a lawful authority that given by God, legal authority undoing the God-given rights. And you, as the respondent superiors in this matter and the principals, have the authority and the duty to stay true to those constitutional limitations. Government codes are made to authorize and limit the authorities of government, not the people. The codes and the administrations that you manage and here are here to limit the government, not the people. In my observations of the use of the... and the codes that are being used here, they're being applied to the people and not just the government, where their limitations do apply. They're done without being... having access to the copyrighted materials that are the fundamental implications, and they're done without judicial review. Everything is an agency review. In the conflict of interest that everybody here, working for the state, being paid by the state, being paid by the county, creates a conflict of interest. There is no exercise of a judicial review of any of these actions. And the bar association itself is a franchise of the crown, of the temple, the Crown Temple. It has a private allegiance, and you're being advised by foreign nationals. You and your bar attorneys have taken an oath of allegiance to the crown. There is a conflict of interest, and there is a duty that you're ignoring here on the protection of the people. By what authority, law, or theory of law, do you claim to have the lawful power to usurp the natural sovereignty of the people? How do you knowingly, willingly, and intentionally, before witnesses, join this conspiracy of the Crown Temple and reasonably expect to be immune from the consequences for unlawful and potentially treasonous action?
Come on down.
Hi, I wasn't going to speak. My name is Cindy Renn. I'm in District One, and I just wanted to say, please, consider seriously voting no on this resolution. The voice of the people have spoken, and they say they do not want this. This is... seems like a big government overreach. It is violating our constitutional rights. It is not a fair process to the people. And so I'm just encouraging you to vote no and follow the voice of the people. The voice of the people do not want this. So please listen to the voice of the people. Thank you.
Okay, any final public comment? Any callers, Julie? Any final callers?
There's no callers. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, is there somebody... Okay, this is going to be the last public comment, and then we're going to close public comment.
No, no. No, I don't think the people are done.
I'll determine that. I kept it open a long time.
You work for the people.
Oh, my God. This will be the last public comment.
No, no.
Go ahead, sir. Okay, raise your hand if you still want to make a public comment, please. Okay, then we'll take... then we'll close it after you. All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Good day, Board. My name is Anthony Lewis from the House of Frank Kito. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. I'm standing here in my full capacity as heir and steward in the kingdom of God and the kingdom of heaven. Today, I'm here to place you on public... place on public record a lawful notice of no authority and formal objection to the agenda item SR 251750, which attempts to convert alleged community development agency assessments into secured debts against the people of this county without contract consent or verified claim. Let it be clear, you have no lawful authority to attach debts to property without due process, sworn affidavit, or trust agreement. These administrative acts, under color of law, are ultra-vires, fraudulent, and violate the trust and duty owed to the people. There is no injured party, no court of record, no living man or woman testifying to any harm. Therefore, you proceed on presumption only, and presumption is... and presumption in equity is unrebutted fraud. If you pass this resolution, you take on personal and commercial liability for constructive fraud, breach of fiduciary duty, unlawful conversion of estate assets, malfeasance in office, violation of the California Constitution, and higher jurisdiction, and treason. I speak not only for myself, but in unity with all living people in Nevada County who now stand informed, awakened, and ready to hold this body accountable. You have been served formal notice. If you vote in favor, it shall be treated as your admission of personal liability and your acceptance of consequences, both temporal and eternal, Council. I now serve this written notice into public record as required lawful notice and demand. Let truth be established, let remedy be known, and let this trespass be stopped. Thank you.
Okay, final commenter. Come on down.
Hi, everybody. First of all, I want to thank everyone here for taking their time, because, as we know, time is precious. So these moments are all precious to us. Thank you, guys, for your time. Thank you for your time. It's been enlightening. I'm sure we're all thankful that we have more information to go on. So we've heard a lot of facts and information that I believe is binding and accurate, so today I choose to speak from the heart. I hate to see my neighbors cry. I hate to see our friends and family cry. This is really hard to see. I am not on a list. I don't plan on being a list, but I don't think anybody here was planning on being a list. I hope nobody ever has to be on a list again, although I know that's probably not going to happen. to happen. I implore you to please vote no. I grew up with so many of the people who are here. It is so neat. I haven't seen these people in years, but I went to school with their kids. I see them at the grocery store. I understand some of the information behind this and why you might think this is a good idea. But again, as my mom and dad taught me, even one person left behind or harmed is too many. And I'm hearing so many stories of people who have been harmed by this and what this could lead to. I believe in respecting my elders, loving thy neighbor, and this is going to hurt our neighbors. We just heard about homelessness and we're talking about something that could open a door for people's properties to be taken. This is not okay. You know, we need to support each other. And again, I'm not on a list, but this encourages myself and good people to raise other people up that are having hardships, these lovely people who are being hurt. I have your back. I love you. That's why I'm here. I have your back as representatives of us. And again, I appreciate your time. I want to support you. I want to be honest with you. I want you to be honest with us. We should be taking care of each other. I don't think this is going to be something that takes care of people. It's going to hurt people. I know 80-year-olds who just had a problem with a code violation. They were going to try to fix it themselves because they don't have the monetary funds to do it, and now they're in jeopardy. And this would lead to them losing their home eventually. That would be the outcome if something like this passes. Please consider that. Thank you for your time. With all love and respect to you and everybody here, thank you so much for being here, for being open, honest, and presenting good facts. Please vote no. Thank you so much.
Okay, public comment is closed, so we'll bring it back to the Board and to staff. Staff, I'm going to let you take a moment to figure out which pieces of this. There's a lot said that we want to obviously focus on the issue at hand, this motion, what it means and what we're doing with it. I'll just say in general, really, to keep it as simple as I can, most of the people in this community don't have to go through this process because they don't have code violations. Most of the people who have code violations, if they need to work on it, if they have hardship, economic hardship, whatever it is, staff works with them. That's at direction, at the direct. We listen to you. Please let me, all right, I'm, I'm going to say something right now, and I'd like to be able to finish my thought. Our staff works hard at the direction of the Board to work with you if you have issues. This is about personal responsibility. There's only two ways to pay the costs of this action, which gives you multiple times, multiple letters, and multiple ways to resolve it. If the folks who have violated the code aren't paying for it, taxpayers who have not violated the code are paying for it, those are the only two ways this gets paid. So I'm going to turn it over to see if staff have anything. If you want to quiet down, they can try to respond to some of your specifics, okay? Go ahead, Tricia.
Sure, so I appreciate public comment. There weren't too many questions. I would say there was one comment about administration fees, and specifically, you could look at Section 12.05.220-Q, which does say the county may pursue any and all legal and equitable remedies for the collections of fines, interest, administrative costs, and attorney's fees incurred. And then it goes into more detail. With that, I mean, we're happy to answer any questions the Board might have. There's clearly, you know, disagreement amongst facts, but we stand behind what we've presented and what's in the staff report.
Thank you. Matt or Doug, do you want to address the, all the legal issues? Just make the statement that we, you may want to repeat what was in the presentation.
Good afternoon, Chair Hall. Sure. Staff have looked at this. The legal authority is derived from the state legislature, which has adopted these statutes that give the county the authority to pass the ordinance that the Board has passed, which in turn defines what abatement is, what administrative costs are, and the process for collecting those costs and when they're imposed. And staff is following that.
Administrative cost.
So staff is following the procedure.
Thank you. All right. Matt, do you want to, any clarifications that you could?
Chair Hall, just to add a few, a little bit. So these, the costs that are being placed on the tax roll, they are not citations. These are purely administrative costs only. Our zoning code does outline what administrative costs are, and these do fall within that definition.
Great, thank you. Back to the Board. Questions? Rob?
I don't really have any questions. A few comments. I mean, it pains me to see, you know, the public comment and these stories of people that feel victimized or hurt. It also pains me to hear people I know to be hardworking county employees being attacked individually. So it's hard. And I know, and I'll share a story. Before I came to office, I had an interaction with Tricia. It had to do with a similar, not code compliance, but fees, fire district. We disagreed. She was doing her job. I felt like representing the county. So I've been there, but I've since had more experiences with her and know her to be a hardworking, genuine people. And I think everyone that was named today, I think they're getting a bad rap. So that's hard. It's hard for me to watch public comment. And I know that everybody's, this hits home because it's important to you, but it's just kind of hard to watch. But moving on from that, I will say, on a grand scale, I believe in less taxes or lower taxes, less regulation, less government interference in economic day life. So for, on a grand scale, I'm tend, I hear, I have a hard time with this. And I understand it's been 12 years. And I'll even say this, please don't boo, it may very well stand up in court and if we're to go to Supreme Court, I think the county would probably win. But I'm not going to get into that because that's beyond my pay grade. We have to rely on staff and county council. So I get that and, but the fact that it's been 12 years and other municipalities do it, I don't think there's as big a maybe targeted planned conspiracy, if you want to call it that. But I get, I mean, I get both sides. But I think it's gotten a little heated. So from my perspective, I think I'm a pilot on a high altitude. The idea of a minimal code compliance, getting on someone's property tax, that I already feel like our property taxes or fees are too much, I've got a problem with that. That's not speaking to the staff. The code compliance has probably the hardest job in the county. I know we've adjusted the policies because there's so much gray area. I will say, I hear these stories here, there's hundreds of more in the community. We saw the pictures of egregious violations that, to be honest with you, I wish we could throw the book at them because it's affecting the community. So we've got this contrast between what I would consider hardworking, law-abiding people, and then code compliance has to deal with the opposite. And I see it in my district, I see it in my neighborhood. So I try and balance that between, yeah, there could be mistakes made, yes, no, versus the good of the community. So there is a place for code compliance. I think there's room going forward to do more, just like when we're talking about homelessness, just to evolve the policies. But just getting back, and I don't want to get distracted here, the idea that there's 33 cases on that list and all but two of them are below $500, if not a couple hundred, I have a problem with that. And I would recommend to my colleagues, if you were to go through this, I'm not supporting it, that you set a threshold of, if you absolutely insist that you want to do this, and I don't fault my colleagues if they vote for it, I, this isn't, I don't know, I feel like it's gotten too heated, but I think there should be a threshold because there's only two out of 33 that are even above $1,000. The total amount is like $15,000 and the, you know, you take out those two and it's a fraction of that. So once again, I'm not in support of this because of my ideals, and I just think, you know, the idea of property taxes coming from fees and people could eventually lose their property, I have a problem with that. So I don't want to waste time. I think you know where I stand, but there's just something that doesn't sit right with me. I don't think it's because our staff is targeting people. It's their job. I think if you dealt with them in a different context, you'd feel differently. I've dealt with them all in my six months. I think they do a great job with their tasks to do. I appreciate their hard work. So it pains me to see them attacked. It also pains me to see you guys hurting because you feel attacked. So I don't want to get philosophical here, but from my standpoint, fees going to property taxes eventually on amounts that 31 out of 33, some of them are $76. It just doesn't feel right to me from an ideological standpoint. So I appreciate both sides. I think we need to take down the tone a little bit, but I appreciate it.
Yeah, it's a very, it's complex, to say the least. I wanted to just honor what you've all said and brought forward in your comments. I received a bunch of phone calls yesterday and a bunch of written comments. I appreciate that. I respectfully disagree with many of the arguments that have been made. I feel like, I think it's a gross misunderstanding of the effects of the policy. There is due process, and that's why I ask the kind of global question of how many, what timeframe does it take to go from a citation or an invoice being issued to a property owner to the tax roll implications, which is five-plus years? The two sides to the coin, I'm looking at the same document that Supervisor Tucker kind of referenced, and I'm seeing $152, $76, one, you know, 152, 36, 144. You know, these are, these are very minor amounts, in my opinion, and there's only two ways, to Chair Hall's point, that these are going to be paid. They're either going to be paid by the person who has consumed county resources, or they're paid by the remaining taxpayers of this county. And that is the only way they get paid. And from my opinion, it's unfair to take a consumption of resources and shift that burden from the property owner, who may have code violations that are unsafe, that are unsanitary, and having conditions of property that would affect their neighbors and detract from their property value and their enjoyment, and their quiet enjoyment of their property, to shift that burden from the person who has these code issues over to a taxpayer who does pay their tax bill, who does meet the code requirements, who does go through the process that we've all outlined. This is the United States of America. This is the state of California, and this is Nevada County. We have rules and we have laws. And there's this con law conversation going on about the constitutional conduct related to this. This is the job of this legislative body, is to enforce rules and regulations equally among all people. There's 100,000-plus people in this county that rely on us to do that. The people that are in this room, I honor your, I honor what you're saying to me. I understand what you're saying to me, and I respectfully disagree. I represent 20,000 or so people that are not in this room, who choose to follow the rules and have complied, and have also rectified differences they've had with the county, differences they've had with the state, and differences they've had with the federal government. When we talk about due process, there's a five-plus-year due process here, all the way down to the appeal process. You can't appeal to somebody independent of the county. I feel like from my perspective as a lawmaker and as a legislator, that fits my bill. I support this 100%.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you all for coming in and speaking today, and then thank you for staff for going all over this information. I just don't think you're going to send us the wrong information from, the court part was always really interesting to me. I don't like things added to my taxes either. I get it. And I look at this list, and it is, some of the bills are very tiny on it, I get it. But then somebody has to pay it. I guess that's where I'm kind of stood up on this, is how do we, how do we justify that with our whole community? Hardy, you said it very well. So I do have, I feel like by the time you've gone on this list, it's almost probably five years, some of them. I wish the dates were, so some of them, these are dated here, but some of them are five years old. So I'm just kind of interested too in that, like, so the process to have appeal, but interesting to know how many of these had an appeal and how many of them, I know one's in court, that's happened. So how many of these folks actually took the time to appeal the actions? So just curious about that. And so I think in general, I mean, I don't like things added to my taxes either. I pay a lot of taxes every year, but then I think if I had a bill like this, I probably would have, I would have liked to seen the work being done to justify why it's here in the first place. And I, and I'm hard pressed to believe that our staff doesn't do that. I mean, I really believe that there's probably extenuating circumstances out there. I'm not going to say there's not some things that maybe I would have looked at differently, but I, to say that that doesn't happen, I'm pretty hard pressed. I mean, I watch staff, I watch the work they do. I have constituents that I'm working with that I know they work with. So I just, I'm hard pressed to say that you guys don't do a good job. So with that, Hardy, I just, I don't have any other questions. I think they, you know, there's good points brought on both sides, but I do think that our county's done its due diligence, so. I don't want to prolong this. I'm just going to say that I agree with Hardy's comments and, you know, I support what has happened here. And I think that it is, it is incumbent upon the people who have created the issues to take their own personal responsibility to pay because, like, it was brought up, somebody has to pay for it. And this is, I guess what I don't understand is, this is something that's been on this Board agenda for the last however many years. It's also, every municipality in our county has a very similar process. I'm not sure why this one has been singled out as being different than placing delinquent water and sewer bills onto your property tax rolls, you know, replacing, putting other, there's special districts who do it. So we're not doing anything different in this county today than has been done here for years. And I'm sorry that people have individual issues, and I think, I don't want us to see this get conflated. The individual issues that you have, we need to deal with those, and I appreciate hearing them. But, you know, there's 20 people that are here today that was brought up, there's over 100,000 people who live in the county, where, I mean, I've maybe gotten 10 emails and no phone calls on this issue from people in my district. So I support the, you know, the work that's been done here, appreciate the work of staff, and just need to move forward.
Okay, looking for a motion and a second, please, to adopt the resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Bullock and Swarthout, please call the roll. Thank you, Chair. District Five.
Yes.
District Two.
No.
District Four.
Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District One. Yes. The motion passes. Thank you very much, staff, for everything you've done and for your in-depth description and explanations. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to go into closed session. Kit, do you want to read us out?
Chair Hall, would you like to go closed session now or with time, do it later on in the day? Is that your discretion?
Okay. Okay, let's take lunch. Want to do, you guys want to have?
How long is closed session?
Closed session will be about 15 minutes.
Okay, let's do closed session first, please.
So Chair Hall, so the closed session today is, as listed on the agenda, county council's requesting closed session to discuss one matter in which there's significant threat of litigation against the county.
Any comment on closed session? Public comment closed. We'll be back here in session at 1:30 for our next item.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful hours. outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything, but really, we focus a lot on wildfire, because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise, to prepare residents, to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go. Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then, when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So, the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So, the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really, what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home, so that embers won't get into under your house, or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home, so when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to give myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed, and it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery, that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really, anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So, whether it's a snowstorm, or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So, what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So, a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack, it could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. It's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries, to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out, so you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuating.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes, I have an insulin pump, right? And so, that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate, or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So, what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So, we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise, and first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone, it was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were welcomed by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk, so on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching the fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air, and I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours, so it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire, and they talked about how, if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so, I started really thinking about this connection between isolation, and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So, we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance, to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day, so absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive, and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So, we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state. The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece, and it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area. Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number, it'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so, as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol, came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residents that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very, you know, clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window, here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock, and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do, and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So, if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, a new hero will emerge. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information, and write down the zone that is given to you, where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and knowing your zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful, because you'll know what zones are being evacuated, or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else, other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth, it can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street, so please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone, and having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything, but really, we focus a lot on wildfire, because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise, to prepare residents, to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go. Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then, when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So, the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So, the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training- This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to give myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out, so you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as in evacuating.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang, picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance, to have that group of people that they were going to call. And she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece, and it's simply that. It's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones Fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residents that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
You look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock, and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do, and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 211. We're here to support you.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise, to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to give myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house. And we're watching the fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how, if it wasn't for my neighbor, who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, they're outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece. And it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residents that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 211. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada. A new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you will know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really, what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea. So we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer. And that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house. But then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really, anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in Paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching the fire come down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
A 10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And she saved my life that day, so absolutely having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece, and it's simply that. It's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low.
Order, please. The mic. Okay, everybody. Hello, everybody? I'd like everybody to quiet down, please. Please, quiet down. Please, thank you so much. Look at this huge crowd of beautiful people. All right. Thank you all for being down here. We have a lot to get through, and we need to do one tiny bit of business first. So Kit, please, would you read us back out in?
So coming out of closed session, direction was given to staff.
Thank you. All right. So I'm going to turn it over now to Susan.
Good afternoon, Chair Hall and members of the board. I am Susan Cadera, the interim HR Director, and I am pleased to bring you today the 24-25 Employee Recognition Awards Program. The Employee Recognition Awards Program is a way for employees to nominate their fellow county employees for stellar performance. This year, there are eight categories. Last year, there were seven. The eight categories are Above and Beyond Employee of the Year, Collaborative Employee of the Team or Team of the Year, Innovative Employee of the Year, Intern or Volunteer of the Year, Rookie of the Year, Supervisor of the Year, Employee of the Year, and the newest category, HPO in Action Employee or Team of the Year. Each year, we seem to receive an increasing number of nominations, and this year is no exception. We received 135 nominations in total. Over 400 individual employees are represented by these nominations.
Well done, people. You're all winners.
Due to the large number of nominations and nominees, we've changed our process this year. You'll see notes in your presentations that speak to the process changes, and I'll repeat them here. Namely, we are asking the nominees to stand, if they are able, where they are, to not come down to the front due to the sheer numbers of them. And the audience, our enthusiastic, wonderful audience, is asked to hold their applause until the entire list of nominees is named. I know this is difficult. Therefore, we have supplied some silent applause tools. And our audience is free to wave them in silence during the reading of the nominations. We appreciate that. We just have so many people to recognize we want to get through in order. And at the end, when you are reading the name of the winner, of course, the winner may come down to loud applause. We hope that this amended process helps us to be able to acknowledge our nominees and our nominators in the time allotted for this event. Speaking of the large number of nominations, we do want to recognize our panel of five judges who really went the extra distance this year to read the number of nominations we had. I'd like to recognize each of our judges for their contribution to this effort. And judges, you may stand up or raise your hand for acknowledgement. First, Patrick Ideman, our Assistant County Executive Officer, representing the CEO's office. Oh, it's going to be a tough crowd to control. Well done, crowd. That was well done. Reverend Lonnie Howard of the Sierra Center for Spiritual Living, representing the community. Alex Kiebel Toll, last year's Employee of the Year recipient. Chair Hall, Chair of the Board. And Nick Wilsec, County Librarian, representing department heads. Thank you very much for your service, judges. Following today's ceremony, we invite everyone to the Empire Room for a scrumptious reception. Chair Hall, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Susan and Kathy, for all the work that you've done to organize this. This was a huge, huge effort this year. So let's see how we can all follow directions. That was so well done. You did better than us. But welcome to this year's Employee Recognition Award Program, recognizing employees for stellar work done in fiscal year 2024 to 2025. So you already heard the instructions. I'm not going to read them again. I'm just going to go right into the next, the first category that I get to announce. The first category is Above and Beyond Employee of the Year. And this is an employee who consistently displays exceptional customer service to employees, clients, or the community. The nominees are, remember to just stand and no applause. Lorianna Checchi, Clerk of the Board. Shawna Cresswell, Auditor Controller. Amanda Dowd, Sheriff. Rachel Gicker, IGS. Douglas Johnson, County Counsel. Are you people standing up so we can see you? Thank you. All right, wave. Catherine Kessler, Public Health. Linda Lucasey, Truckee Sheriff. Thomas McHugh, Behavioral Health. Kelly McKinley, CEO's Office. Where? I just got lost. Lexine Moyer, Public Works. Hannah Needham, Child Support Services. Melody O'Shea, District Attorney. Lauren Plantenga, Library. Sharon Reed, Social Services. Jeanette Smith, Assessor. And our final nominee, Nancy Stewart, Social Services. Please join me in a round of applause as we make our way. Okay, wonderful. Well done. And the winner is Lorianna Checchi, Clerk of the Board Office. Is she down here? Is she down here? Lorianna, we're calling you. There she is! So I get to read. I get to first read. Can you hear me? Can you guys hear? Oh, it's very loud. I get to read this first. So please join me in congratulating Lorianna. Lorianna consistently demonstrates dedication, adaptability, and an unwavering commitment to excellence. And as a valued member of the Clerk of the Board Office, she continually seeks to improve internal processes. However, her continued dependable willingness to step in and take on extra work during staff shortages showcases her exceptional dedication to supporting her colleagues and ensuring continuity in operations. She willingly goes beyond her assigned responsibilities, filling in wherever needed while maintaining a high level of professionalism. Lorianna has played a significant role preventing delays and ensuring critical tasks are completed without disruption. As a result, both her department and those relying on its services experience smoother operations and greater productivity. The county as a whole is grateful to Lorianna for going above and beyond. And let me say, she's in my office, but I did not do this. This was a team of folks, and everyone had a story about how helpful Lorianna has been to everyone. But I have had the opportunity to work with her closely, and she, this is so well-deserved. I'm so proud of her. Let's give her a round of applause. Good. Thank you.
All right, the next category is Innovative Employee of the Year, and that is an employee who generates, evaluates, and implements new ideas. Same drill. I'll read your name, and you can stand up and hold your applause till the end. The nominees are Brittany Blake, Library. Shannon Glas, Public Health. Thomas Maoli, Cannabis Policy and Compliance. And the final nominee, Lexine Moyer, Public Works. Please join me in a round of applause for all the nominees. And the winner is Thomas Maoli, Cannabis Policy and Compliance. All right, here's a description of Thomas. Thomas exemplifies the core principles of innovation through his proactive leadership, strategic thinking, and commitment to organizational improvement. He excels at identifying operational inefficiencies, developing creative solutions, and implementing process improvements that directly enhance county services and outcomes. One significant contribution involved developing and implementing a standardized, cross-departmental collaboration collaboration model for managing complex cannabis compliance issues. Recognizing the challenges associated with investigations involving multiple regulatory components, such as land use, environmental health, and code violations, Thomas designed an integrated approach that improved communication and coordination between internal departments, including planning, environmental health, building, and code compliance, as well as external agencies such as law enforcement and state regulatory partners. His efforts have ensured that multifaceted enforcement actions are handled in a consistent, transparent, and efficient manner. Congratulations again, Thomas Maoli, Innovative Employee of the Year.
All right. They gave me the longest one. So I am going to read the nominees for the HPO category. This, I'm sorry. Oh, this category has both individual and team nominees, but we have only one winner. Did I get that right? Okay, sorry. You know, they gave us, we rehearsed this, and I'm still complicated. Okay, I'm sorry. HPO in Action Employee or Team of the Year. So there's both teams and individuals. So the individual nominees are Lorianna Checchi, the Clerk of the Board, Joshua Denny from Waste Water, Craig Greispach, IGS Administrator, Matthew McDermott, Assessor, and Sandy Philpott, IGS Administrator. And then our team nominees, the entire Assessor's Office, Public Infrastructure Excellence Team, the entire Waste Water Department, Risk Management, all two of you, Veteran Services, all four of you, yay, the Eligibility and Employment Team, Behavioral Health All Staff Planning Committee, DEICB Work Group, representing Social Services, HHSA Administration, Behavioral Health, Human Resources, Public Health, and IGS, and the Environmental Health Department Team. And our final nominee is our Roads, Fleets, Equipment Procurement, representing Fleet, CDA Administrator, and Road Maintenance. And I just want to say on the teams, the level of collaboration, both within your departments and then all the departments collaborating together, was extremely impressive to see how respected you are by your peers. So please join me in a round of applause as we congratulate all of our nominees. Here's the complicated part. We have two winners in this category this year. So let's congratulate the first of the two winners, the Public Infrastructure Excellence Wastewater Team. And I'm going to call your names, and when I do, if you'll come down, and we're going to get a picture at the end. So John Corso, Joshua Denny, Sean Dominguez, Tanner Heflin, Trevor Howe, Chad McBride, Patrick Maloney, Isaac Novunder, Daniel Quealy, Brad Rist, Josh Shaw, Matthew Spilner, Sean Sullivan, Mike Toler, Brad Torres, and Kyle Torres. So congratulations to you all. For years, the Wastewater Department operated under one unspoken rule. That's the way it's always been done. Today, they ask, how can we do this better? Efficiency is their new standard. For instance, the Wastewater Department recognized the need for a digital maintenance system and purchased a product which helped them build their computerized maintenance management system from scratch. Today, that system tracks assets, schedules, preventative maintenance, manages inventory, and frees up staff to focus on solutions, not paperwork. It's worked so well that in six years, they've rebuilt 10 lift stations from the ground up, installing new pumps, control valves, and piping without ever stopping the sewer flow. And I don't know how many of you actually are on sewer. I happen to be on sewer in Grass Valley. It's kind of the unspoken most important thing that we have happened in this county. So today, sharing the ideas is expected. Crew members, regardless of title, lead projects and shape how work gets done. Empowerment is how they do business, the HPOA. This is how transformation happens. One voice, one idea, one improvement at a time. Congratulations to the Wastewater Team. So now, as I said, this category had us tied. So also, please, please hold your applause as I read the next winner. But will Sharon Reed and Erica Valdez please come to represent the second-winning team, Eligibility and Employment Team? Since starting their eligibility and employment HPO journey about five years ago, the results have been incredible. By embracing the HPO philosophy, they eliminated a decade-long backlog, and they are now processing public assistance applications within days of receiving them. Across California, eligibility and employment departments are facing extreme vacancies. But Nevada County has built an amazing culture with an engaged team, resulting in an impressively low vacancy rate. Word of their wisdom has spread, and they've even been invited to speak at state conferences about improving culture through values-based leadership. Throughout their journey, the team adopted several HPO principles such as institutionalizing values using the parallel organization to leverage their team's strengths to creativity, creatively solve problems, and empowering leadership at all levels. Congratulations, and thank you so much. Okay, and I am fortunate today to read the Volunteer or Intern of the Year. A volunteer intern whose dedicated service or contribution has a significant impact on the division or department that they serve and/or the community at large. Our nominees today are Ben Finley, the CEO's Office; Courtney Kesterson, Public Defender; Diane Driesbach, Sheriff; Graham Grandemire, Public Health; Jan Swire from Library; Karen Inman from Human Resources; and our final nominee is Mark Mitch Booth from the Sheriff's Department. Let's give everyone a big applause. So now, with the drum roll, Graham, come on down from Public Health. So Graham has been an invaluable asset to the Tobacco Prevention Program, a program which requires leadership skills to build and support a community tobacco coalition. During his internship, Graham played a pivotal role in advancing two tobacco policies in both Grass Valley and Nevada City. This was a significant achievement, as the program has struggled for over two years to gain attention from stakeholders. Awesome for you. Graham's ability to build strong relationships with Chamber of Commerce and City Council members was instrumental in breaking through these barriers. His efforts facilitated critical meetings. You brought the right people to the table, and ultimately helped move policy requests into city councils' agendas. Fantastic. Graham, your contributions have been nothing short of transformative. His leadership has set a new standard for youth involvement in public health advocacy. His confidence, determination, and ability to create meaningful change make him an invaluable asset to our program and the Nevada County community. Thank you so much. That is so exciting.
All right, the next category is Rookie of the Year, which is an employee in their first or second year of employment with the county, which would include me until I read the second part, which is who helps make their work environment more productive, more efficient, and stand out due to exemplary service. So the nominees for Rookie of the Year, Daniel Emenzola, IGS Administration; Nicole Carter, Veteran Services; Joshua Dellis, Behavioral Health; Jacqueline Graham, Library; Colleen Hayes, Behavioral Health; Lori Hennessy, Office of Emergency Services; Blaine Ingles, Clerk of the Board; Amanda Krempel, Social Services; Stephanie Lanza, Assessor; Heather Madison, Behavioral Health; Megan Murphy, Behavioral Health; Chelsea Prin, Social Services; Daniel Quealy, Wastewater; Owen Sleth, Facilities Management; Carla Vasquez, Environmental Health; and the final nominee, Haley Wall, Sheriff. All right, join me in giving a round of applause for all the nominees. And the winner is Lori Hennessy, Office of Emergency Services. All right. When Lori was hired by the OES in August last year, it was evident right away that she was a natural. And in less than a year, she has led many OES grant projects. Lori is a quick study, and when she assumed the Homeland Security Grant responsibilities, she saw right away how cumbersome the existing process was for both recipients and those administering the grant. So Lori educated herself on the process and reached out to other counties to identify best practices for managing this specific grant. She then implemented those processes and even improved them by creating her own external dashboard for grant monitoring, as well as an online process for grant recipients. This reduced user frustration and county staff time requirements while maximizing grant dollars for local first responders. As Lori approaches all her tasks with the same balance and creativity and diligence, she has become a crucial part of the OES team. Congratulations, Lori, Rookie of the Year.
Congrats.
Okay, great to see. I'm honored to present the Collaborative Employee or Team of the Year, an individual or team who collaborated on a project that results in added value to the county. This category has both individual and team nominees, but only one winner. Please remain seated and hold your applause while the individual and team names are called. So on the individual side, Scott Aaron, Information Systems; Brittany Blake, Library; Rachel Gicker, Information Systems. Then on the team side, we have the entire District Attorney and Victim Witness Office. From Child Support, the 2025 School Backpack Team, all right, from the Assessor's Office, the Annual Report and New Construction Brochure Group; the APS NCSO Mobile Crisis Team from the Sheriff's Office and Social Services; the Auditor's Office ERP Team; Social Services Foster Care and Adoptions Team; County Compass Project Team, representing nine different departments, Auditor, CDA, CEO's Office, HR, IGS, Library, Purchasing Sheriff, Treasure, HHSA Administrations, Housing and Community, oh, that's a different team, thank you, and Treasure. That's one team. Now we have the Purchasing Sheriff and Treasurer, HHSA Administration, is that right?
No.
HHSA.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so Purchasing Sheriff and Treasurer. Oh, it was? Okay, thank you for correcting me. Now we have the HHSA Administrations, Housing and Community Services, Public Health Fiscal Team; IS Desktop Services Team; IST Response Team; Linkages 2.0 and Social Services; Public Health Maternal, Child, and Adolescent Health Team; Nevada County Behavioral Health Billing Team; Nevada County Fiscal Budget Team from the CEO's Office, Auditor's Office, and Behavioral Health; Nevada County Biomass Task Force, representing IGS Admin, Roads, Environmental Health, OES, Solid Waste, Public Works, Facilities, and Wastewater. Okay, now the signs. Nevada County Library Youth Services; Health and Wellness Team from Public Health; Office of Emergency Services Department; Recreation Fair Team; Technical Operations Team; and the final nominee, out of all those teams, the Young Entrepreneur Pitch Team. It's a lot of teams. I think I had the hardest job. But now, please join me in a round of applause as we congratulate all of our nominees. And the winner is the Biomass Task Force. So we can come on down. All right. Representing IGS, IGS Admin, Roads, Environmental Health, OES, Solid Waste, Public Works, Facilities, and Wastewater. Well, the following employees are here with me, Daniel Emenzola, Michelle Garcia, Katry Levinson, Kelly McDaniel, Ricky Martinez, Stacy Manning, Julie Miller, Lexine Moyer, Ron Nunick, Pat Perkins, Steve Rens, Sherri Romell, Rome, Romrell, thank you, Brad Torres, and John Vessi. Yay, let's hear a round of applause. This year, the OES/CDI Biomass Task Force tackled several projects to mitigate the negative impacts of winter storm disasters and to improve wildfire resilience. Together, the team addressed hazardous vegetation concerns around homes and along private roads such as vegetation removal along 562 miles of county roads, and planning several shovel-ready projects. But large woody debris along roadways caused by winter storms and tree die-offs was a key challenge. The Biomass Task Force team came up with a creative solution. Convert large woody material into value-added biochar. This unique project required teamwork from several departments, Environmental Health, Roads Maintenance, OES, Facilities, IGS, and Public Works. This team collaborated on permitting, cleaning up county properties, coordinating logistics, and managing all the moving parts. When the debris was safely burned and the biochar was ready, the Solid Waste Team included the material as part of a free compost giveaway, offering soil amendments to interested residents. This cross-departmental group then worked together to offer community green waste events at the newly renovated McCourtney Road Transfer Station. And with that, congratulations to each of you, and I'll give them a big round of applause.
You guys are going to have to squish in.
Is there a plaque?
They probably make two rows.
Oh, they have it. Oh, there it is. Okay.
Okay, this is so exciting. I just love this, you guys. I look out here, and I just am always just so in awe of the people that work and live here and take care of this community. So now, I get to talk about the Supervisor of the Year. This is an overall excellent supervisor, and that's not me, that's to lead workers who support leads, mentors, inspires, and respects employees, and provides quality service to the public. So our nominees are Aubrey Burkholder from Library; Kelly Carpenter from Social Services; Carissa Seer from the Clerk of the Board; James Edwards, Building Inspection; Kit Elliott, County Counsel; Toby Gavon from Public Health; Beth Hare from Sheriff's Corrections; Colleen Hayes, Behavioral Health; Shelby Hawkins, Social Services; Kelsey Hess, Code Compliance; Brittany Inks from Risk Management; Priya Kennall from Behavioral Health; Andrea Lemkool, HHSA Administration; Katry Levinson, Environmental Health; Jennifer McCormick, Sheriff's Corrections; and the final nominee is Elise Strickler, IGS Administration. All right, everyone, congratulations. I gotta tell you, we didn't even have to turn up the air conditioner from the waving of the papers. You're keeping the air flowing in here. This is pretty good today. Okay, so are we ready for the winner? Aubrey Burkholder, come on down. How about that? So being a great librarian is a natural for you, Aubrey. Lucky for her team, so is being an awesome supervisor. She makes it look easy with her compassion, her knowledge and her belief in what libraries stand for. She leads by example and truly makes a library a place where everyone is welcome. Aubrey prioritizes her team's well-being. To help her staff's professional development, she snares many training videos during staff meetings and encourages her staff to talk through scenarios they may encounter on the job. When needed, her staff can depend on her to help in difficult situations. And she always answers with empathy and poise while upholding the expectations set in the library's code of conduct, making sure both staff and patrons are comfortable and safe while in the library. Aubrey's commitment to the organization's vision creates a ripple effect of positivity. By prioritizing her team's well-being, she has created an environment that fosters compassion, curiosity and customer service. Congratulations, Aubrey Supervisor of the Year. Oh, cool.
Can I just say what a pleasure it's been to do this this afternoon after this morning's board meeting? Thank you for all the positivity and great work and love in the room. And good job with the signs. You're all gonna have hurting arms. I see you yawning there, Dave. Watch that. I see you. I've got my eyes on you. All right. Employee of the Year, and overall excellent employee who goes the extra mile to contribute. The nominees are Scott Aaron, Information Systems. Lorianne Chechi, Clerk of the Board. Shannen DeShane, Treasurer Tax Collector. Michael Graham, Auditor Controller. Jamie Hanf, Public Health. Lori Hansen, Social Services. Fay Hignite, Social Services. Jamie Hogenson, County Counsel. Jennifer Handel, HHSA Administration. Priya Canal, Behavioral Health. Cassandra Keys, Child Support Services. Jennifer Loper, Social Services. Cindy Morgan, Behavioral Health. Kaylin Silkwood, Social Services. Nancy Stewart, Social Services. And the final nominee is Sharon Voss, HHSA Administration. Let's all give them a round of applause. Okay, now, the winner is Cindy Morgan. Oh, I know this is a big deal. You are clearly well-loved and well-appreciated, and I think this is a bit of an emotional moment for you, so we'll all try to hold it together. So congratulations, Cindy. Cindy is passionate about her work and is tireless in her efforts to help her clients and their families significantly improving the lives of Nevada County residents every day. As a program manager in children's behavioral health, Cindy has recruited and trained a team of incredible therapists and case managers who provide high-quality care to the most vulnerable young people in our county. I'm already getting... Cindy is always seeking better ways to provide services for our community. She was at the forefront of bringing early psychosis intervention treatment to Nevada County, and she facilitated the outreach of the National Organization of Victim Advocacy Community Crisis Response to all of Nevada County. Now, these trained responders are prepared to provide trauma-informed crisis intervention, education and emotional first aid in the aftermath of a critical incident. These are simply... There are simply not enough words to adequately convey what a difference Cindy has made and how much better our community is thanks to her efforts. She's an example of perseverance and positive attitude, and she's an inspiration to her team through the example she sets of humble and heart-centered leadership. Cindy has positively impacted thousands of lives, and her contributions will be felt for decades. Congratulations so much, Cindy. Thank you for coming.
Could we call them down for a picture with you?
Yes, Cindy, stay here. Cindy, stay down here with your family. Cindy. Does everyone know you're retiring? Do you want to say something? Do you want me to say something? No? No? Okay, let's just do your family. Let's get your whole family in. Let's just do your family first, huh? Part of the family? Let's just do the one with them and I'll...
Take Cindy.
Let me jump in for one more. Thank you for coming down, all of you. Congratulations again. So great. All right, this concludes our ceremony. You all did a great job with the signs. Give yourselves a round of applause. I couldn't be more proud of the employees of this county. You are all wonderful. Please enjoy some treats up at the Empire Room. We have to finish our business, so maybe we'll see you up there later, but probably not. All right, congratulations. Excuse me. Can I invite everyone to go up to the Empire Room or out in the hallway?
Off, you said?
I'm sorry, folks, we need to continue on with our county business. Can I ask you to go into the hallway or upstairs? I'm sorry to break it up, but people, yeah, thank you, we need to continue on with our county business. If you could go into the hallway or up to the Empire Room. I know, we just... Okay, folks, please, step out in the hallway, please. Okay, that was lovely, lovely, lovely. And we have another good one coming up. So next item, sorry, is the... Sorry, I'm behind. Let's see, Department Matters 25. Protecting Animals While Supporting Sobriety Presentation. And we have Dan Voss, and you will present your guest, will you? And Carissa? Who's opening it?
Yeah, I'm happy to just do a quick open. Carissa Seer.
Thank you.
So Chair Hall and members of the board, Carissa Seer, you're a senior management analyst and just here to provide just a quick introduction to Chief and Liz. Before you will be a community presentation for Protecting Animals While Supporting Sobriety, or PAWS. And it's a new 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization formed in January of 2025. And with you to provide the presentation are Police Chief of Nevada City, Dan Voss, and Liz Newman, President of PAWS. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Voss.
Thank you, and thank you, Chair and county supervisors. I thought the crowd was for me. I was really excited for a minute, but they all cleared out real quick. So I'm Dan Voss, Chief of Police with Nevada City Police Department. But today I'm coming to present PAWS and talk about PAWS, which is a new nonprofit here in town. And I want to talk about first kind of how we got started. And we're brand new, and this started back in October of November of last year. And Liz Newman here was very active in city council. She'd come a lot and express her opinion on matters, talk about what we could do to improve the community. And she asked for a meeting, and it was one of those meetings where you are nervous about, because she wanted to talk about some improvements for homeless. And we've all had these conversations, and a lot of times in our position, it's difficult because we have to say, well, great idea is really hard to implement. But she had this idea or concern, and her concern was if somebody is homeless or struggling with homelessness and addiction, and they have a pet, their only option in Nevada County is to turn that pet, if they want to go to treatment or a facility of any type, to turn that pet over, surrender the pet essentially to the pound or a shelter. Well, I don't know about anybody here, but that's usually the last thing they have in their life. And even if it's not, I mean, in my own home, the hierarchy of importance is my wife, my daughter, our dogs, and then I'm a couple steps down from that. So people are just not going to give up their pets, no matter how critical the need is. So we created PAWS, and the idea behind it, Liz is gonna explain and go over the PowerPoint, but it's to... It sounds like it's for animals, but it's for people, and it's for humans, and this is something that we're trying to do to help our community. So Liz, if you want to jump in?
Sure. Hi, I'm Liz, and I'm super excited to introduce PAWS, which stands for Protecting Animals While Supporting Sobriety. PAWS offers a comprehensive solution to a critical challenge in our community, helping individuals struggling with addiction seek treatment without abandoning their beloved pets. This innovative program provides temporary foster care, veterinary support and reunion services, addressing a significant barrier to recovery while promoting animal welfare. As some of you may or may not know, individuals struggling with addiction face a heart-wrenching decision, seek lifesaving treatment or keep their beloved pets. For our unhoused and low-income neighbors, these pets are often their only family, providing unconditional love and emotional support. Studies show that people experiencing homelessness or financial hardship... I'm sorry. Studies show that for people experiencing homelessness or financial hardship, pets provide significant emotional support, a sense of responsibility and companionship. They positively impact mental health by reducing feelings of loneliness and isolation. So PAWS offers a comprehensive solution. PAWS provides foster care for pets while owners undergo addiction treatment, ensuring their furry family members are safe and cared for. Full veterinary care and medical support, including spay and neutering, are provided to ensure pets' health and well-being. PAWS offers pet food, supplies, grooming and regular update to owners during treatment, maintaining the crucial bond between pet and owner. And post-treatment reunion support services help owners and pets transition back to their life together smoothly. So treatment completion rates increase by 38% when clients know that their pets are safe, according to the Journal of Substance Abuse Treatment. 91% of people in recovery report their pets are a major source of support, according to the Human Animal Bond Research Institute. Individuals with strong support systems, including pets, show 50% higher rates of sustained recovery, according to the National Institute on Drug Abuse. Okay. 6.3 companion animals enter shelters annually, according to the ASPCA. 23% of shelter surrenders are due to owner crises, including addiction treatment. The average shelter stay of a dog in Nevada County Animal Control costs approximately $703 per animal in a 30-day period, not including medical care. Communities pay approx... Oh, okay. Sorry. Communities pay approximately $12,119 per untreated addict annually. This figure includes emergency care services, law enforcement, healthcare and social service costs. Every $1 invested in addiction treatment yields $18 in reduced drug-related crime and criminal justice costs. So a cost comparison, 30% of individuals delay treatment due to pet care concerns. Average shelter's cost per animal is $703 per month, as I mentioned, in Nevada County. The average cost for emergency veterinary care is between $800 and $1,500. So our solution is that pet fostering costs an average of $300 per animal for a 30-day period, a difference of $403 per animal compared to the shelter care, total savings of $4,836 per animal per year. So some of the things that PAWS will be tracking is number of clients served, treatment completion rates, pet health outcomes, cost savings to city services, community impact metrics, and some of our proposed community partners are local veterinary clinics, Sammy's Friends, Ritter Foundation, Nevada County Public Health and Behavioral Health, local animal shelters and local groomers. Similar programs exist in Texas, Minnesota, Colorado, Arizona, Southern California, Massachusetts and many more states, showing the growing recognition of this need. These programs have shown significant success in helping individuals complete treatment while ensuring their pets are well-cared-for, proving the viability of PAWS model. So your support will help remove significant barriers to addiction treatment, allowing more individuals to seek the help they need. PAWS will save lives, both human and animal, by providing crucial support, a crucial support system during the recovery process. By supporting PAWS, you'll help reduce strain on the city services and resources, creating a more efficient system of care. And your support will help build a stronger, more compassionate community that supports both human and animal welfare.
So we'll go over real quick our board. I'm real proud of our board. I think we have a great, strong board. Our Vice President, we have two Vice Presidents. Shawna Leslie has been working with animals for a very long time, and she was most recently with Sammy's and Friends. And when we first reached out to Sammy's and Friends, when we were first creating this nonprofit, one of our first calls was to Sammy's and Friends and said, is this a problem? Is this for real that we're experiencing this? And Shawna told us, it's a huge problem, and if you have a solution, I'd love to be part of it. So that's how she come on board or came a part of the board. Our second Vice President is Dr. Susan Murphy. She owns Four Paws in Nevada City, and she has been awesome. So again, we went to her, said, is this a problem? She says, yes, it's a huge problem, and I would like to be a part of it. And she has been working, as you could imagine, as much... And she has been working, as you could imagine, as much care and love as these animals are seen on the street, they do have medical concerns when they come to us. So Dr. Murphy has been doing everything she can to try to reduce costs for veterinary care. That's me. I'm the treasurer of the organization. And then Rosemary is our secretary, and I have to say, she's one of the hardest workers I've ever had the privilege to work with. She's got great ideas, came onto the board, and has just been working, as anybody knows, it's created a nonprofit. It's not that simple. One of the harder things we had to do was get insurance, which was very difficult. I didn't see that coming because we're working with dogs. And everybody has met Liz here as our President. So in closing, and just real quick, as you saw with some of the numbers, the more we dug into this, when we explored this idea, the more it just made sense. And the more it seemed to me like, why haven't we been doing this everywhere? Why is this not just a common practice that's being done? We could see the numbers. Where the numbers make sense. We could see how the formula makes sense. But even more important to me, it's going to make a difference with people. I really do feel that. When we started this, we're brand new again. We just got our nonprofit, 501(c)(3) recognized in January, and we had a conversation. I said, "Let's start small. We don't want to get big. As we all know, everything's expensive, so we need money coming in. We need to find financial support and everything else. Let's try to do five a year, no more." I think we've already reached that number, at least, for supportive animals. We've got several clients already. We have a new one tomorrow. We're meeting for anything from homelessness to mental health. So we're very excited. It is going to be, I think, a big program that we're trying to partner with everybody in the county, from end to end, from Grass Valley to Truckee, and we're going to be here to support as much as we can. So with that, do we have any questions?
Thank you so much for bringing this forward. And yeah, this is like, oh, my God, what a no-brainer. How come this hasn't happened before? So thank you so much. I love this, and I agree, it's probably going to get a lot of attention. I'm so glad you brought it to the board to share with us. Let me turn it over to my colleagues to have any questions or comments.
No, but I love it, and since I've kind of know some folks that have experienced this, and that's been the choice. You know, I can't do this because I can't give up my dog. And I blame them. I mean, I think that's, we live in a situation where those become your companion and your support piece, so I think this is exciting. I think the other thing is, okay, so I see your little emblem up there. We need to splash up there how they get ahold of our QR code or something, so people know how to reach out to you and donate or do that. So I think that'll be a next new mission for you to get out there. So congratulations, because it is a job to do a 501(c)(3), and then, and actually devote your time. And you do people and dogs, so thank you very much for that. And it looks like you have a fabulous team on board, so I look forward to seeing where this grows from. I think it's great for our pets.
And I will say, we are very active on social media. If anybody in the audience or hears this online is interested, we're always looking for financial support, but even bigger perhaps is foster families. So we do have some foster families, but we're looking from everything, we figured it'd be mostly dogs. Our first client was two cats. So we do have cats, dogs. We're anticipating, who knows what kind of animal sooner or later will come across our door. So if anybody wants to reach out. And our website is PAWS, with two S's, nc.org.
I see, I see a show coming on Yubanet or on local TV, so I, or I, so I feel like you guys can really get this message out. So this was a great, I'm so glad you came and shared it with us.
Thank you.
Yes, I concur. Thank you so much. You know, we live in a community that cares very deeply about animals, and this just goes hand in hand with so many of the other animal service providers that we have in the community, our shelters, Sammy's Friends, Animal Save. I mean, this is just one more tool that we can use to help pets in the community. And I love the fact that this isn't just helping the pets, it's helping the people. I've seen people having to go into sheltering situations where they had to give up their beloved pets, and they were in the shelter so long that they actually ended up getting adopted. And it was tragic, because once the person got back on their feet, they weren't able to retrieve their animal. So, and we do, we love our pets. I know, I love my pets very much, and if I didn't get to see them every day, it would be very hard. So thanks for your hard work on this. And you didn't bring your dog with you, Dan. I was hoping to see the-
Ruby?
The Ruby, yeah. How's she doing?
She's doing great.
Good.
She's amazing, actually. She does get everybody messy. She sheds a lot right now because we're in summer, and she does, of course, slobber everywhere, and she's learned to howl quite well, so probably not a good idea to bring her here.
I know when you have her out and about in the community, it really, it's a comfort to people, and it really humanizes law enforcement to see you with your pets. So, yeah, thanks for all the work that you guys are doing. Keep it up.
Yeah, thank you. What a great idea. I got the conversation with Dan about this a couple weeks ago, maybe, and it was, it was, I left the conversation thinking, wow, what a great idea. I mean, anybody in recovery needs all the help they can get at that one moment that'll allow them to take the next step, you know, and if that takes off some of their responsibilities so they can get there, then, you know, job well done. What is the geographic footprint? Is it countywide, or?
Countywide, we're trying to remain inside the county for clients. Now, if somebody is interested in fostering and they do live outside the county, we're open to that, just because we're in such desperate need of fosters. But clients, we're looking at countywide. Now, they don't need to seek treatment in county, which we have experienced too. So if they're county residents, but they have a treatment facility open, wherever it may be, we will watch their pet. And a big part of it is, which Liz has been excellent at, we send them care packages or updates every two weeks minimum. Here's how your pet's doing. Here's some pictures. They're doing great. They're taken care of. You take care of yourself. So I think those tidbits really are helpful, too, for people that are seeking treatment.
Yeah, that's awesome. Yeah, good work. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that. I'm familiar with the organization and your vision from having attended a few Community Corrections Partnership Meetings. So it's cool to see kind of this come into fruition. And just what a great job of seeing a need and then just taking the initiative to, you know, creating a solution to that and being one small piece out there in kind of the process of recovery. So I look forward to watching you guys succeed, and look forward to having you back to report on all the successes down the road. Good job.
All right, we're going to open up to public comment, and are there any callers by any chance, Julie?
Thank you, Chair Hall. There's no callers right now.
Okay, I don't think there's public comment, so I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the board, and I'm looking for a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. So moved. Second. Swarthout and hook. Roll call, please.
Thank you. District 5?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
And District 1?
Yes. Fantastic. Let's, let's come down for a photo op for you guys, okay? All right, all right. Jeff Goldman, we're ready for you. A resolution proclaiming the week of July 20 to 26 as Probation Services Week. And it looks like you brought your, is that your whole team there? Almost. That's awesome to see you all here.
As you said, I'm, all right, is that better? All right, I'm Jeff Goldman, Chief Probation Officer. I'm here today to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of the members of the Nevada County Probation Department. Every day in Nevada County, 24 sworn probation officers, along with non-s sworn support staff, probation assistants, and others promote public safety by conducting court sentencing investigations, supervising adult and juvenile clients, and by increasing their competency and holding them accountable for their actions. Over the years, our approach has changed. We no longer just pick people up and dust them off and send them on their way. We work with them, their families, and the community to make sure they have the supports they need to be productive members of the community. Officers problem solve shoulder to shoulder with people navigating an often complicated and confusing system. They show up in living rooms, on porches, and bear witness to quiet breakthroughs and hard-won clarity, which you will most likely hear when we have a former client, Keith Curtis, tell his story. Probation officers realize that most individuals that go to jail or prison will be released back into their communities. They understand that the offenders we provide services to are a part of the community. They are moms, dads, brothers, sisters. Officers know for them to be successful in reentering into the community, they need to be held accountable for the harm that they have done to the community, while at the same time providing them an opportunity and the tools they need to be successful in the community. They must do all this while being impartial in the system. Nevada County currently supervises over 500 adults and juveniles that have been convicted or adjudicated, and around 140 pre-trial clients that are pending the court process. There's not a lot of pomp and circumstance around the job of a probation officer, but we see ourselves as the linchpin of the local criminal justice system from intake to reentry. We try and restore the harm individuals have caused to the community, while at the same time bringing them back to be a part of that same community they've harmed. But there are risks involved, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention the recent loss of parole agent Joshua Byrd and the assault on probation officer James Christensen. On July 17th, at approximately 2:50 PM, Agent Byrd was shot inside the Oakland parole office. And then on July 11th, around 2:30 PM, probation officer James Christensen of San Joaquin County was doused in gasoline and set on fire by a probationer. Despite these risks, probation officers continually give the most marginalized members of the society, or our society, the benefit of the doubt when it comes to their potential for change. And like I always say, given I haven't done the actual work of a probation officer for the last decade or so, I brought some folks with me to discuss the job that they do and the complexities of that job. And so I know many times we say probation officers have to wear many hats, and so just some examples of different things that they have to know at this point. And it didn't start this way when I first started as a PO or a probation officer. It's become more and more complex as the years go on, that they need to be the expert in several intervention modalities, such as cognitive behavioral therapy, motivational interviewing, behavioral assessments, in addition to being experts in criminal law and sentencing structure, being proficient in all aspects of their law enforcement roles, such as firearms and defensive tactics, as well as being experts in the juvenile psychology space and foster care systems. So today I brought along probation officer Melissa Blaze. She was our sworn Staff of the Year, and also probation assistant Kayla Meyer, who's sitting way over there, who is our non-s sworn Staff of the Year, to give you a brief synopsis of what they think it is to be a probation officer and the many hats that they wear, and also to introduce you to a probation client that would like to share their story and their journey. So I'll hand it over to you, Melissa.
Go ahead, don't be shy. We want to hear from you.
Hi, my name is Kayla Meyer, and I'm a probation assistant with the department. I've only been with the department for a couple years, but I have learned quite a bit in those couple years. Yes, while part of our job is helping to hold people accountable to court orders and requirements, another huge piece of our job is helping those individuals, meeting them where they're at and seeing how we can help eliminate barriers to success. So I'm looking forward to learning a lot more and growing within the department.
I'm Melissa, is this on? Yeah, Melissa Blaze with the probation department. It's an honor to be here to celebrate pre-trial, parole, probation week. I am a near-20-year veteran of the department, and I have to say that I think I'm more passionate today about the work that we do than when I was when I first got here, which says a lot, because I was passionate back then. You know, probation's evolved a lot over the years, and it's no surprise that the community's attention often goes to, you know, news flashes, newspaper articles, or Facebook posts about some of the individuals that we supervise reoffending. It's not as common that we get to celebrate success stories or that the community gets to hear about those success stories. But the way that probation has evolved over the years has allowed us to make a greater difference than we ever have been able to before by meeting people where they're at and just building relationships with them based on trust and support, you know, and offering, like our chief said, offering services. You know, we get to better understand their why. You know, oftentimes, their behavior can kind of stand out, and the public may not really get to know the why that drives them. So by, you know, building these relationships, we get to better guide them to make positive change in their lives. Today, I want to introduce Keith Mary. I had the privilege of supervising him about eight years ago, and I drove him from the Nevada County Jail into treatment, drug treatment. And he can kind of tell you the rest of his story, but he's somebody that I think that we should shine a light on, and he's, you know, really become a productive member of society and has made, you know, great progress and strides. His wife was actually just on the PAWS. She was Rose. But yeah, it's been such a blessing to see Keith, you know, over the years grow, and yeah, just want to introduce you.
Hey, everybody. My name's Keith. Thanks for having me up here today. Thanks. Thanks, Melissa, for asking me to come up here. Is there a, do I have a timer? Because I can, I can go on and on. Go on and on.
Why don't we set it for five minutes? Is that good?
Five minutes?
We'll set it, so just to give you a little guideline there. All right.
All right. So, so yeah, my name's Keith. Let's kind of just take you back on a backstory just a little bit. I grew up in Florida, in Jacksonville, Florida, and I'm one of seven kids. My mom raised us alone, and in my, and kind of like my relationship with drugs started really early on in life. And so naturally, that comes hand in hand with that is some type of supervision or incarceration, right? And ever since I turned 18, I have been in and out of incarceration and on and off of probation. And, and what I can really say about Nevada County Probation Department is, is like I said, I've been on, I've been on probation for a substantial time of my life, and what I can say about Nevada County Probation Department is, is they, they help facilitate like a safe environment for, for people like me to better their lives, right? They facilitated an environment that motivated me to become willing and willing to change and open-minded enough to, you know, take in new ideas, right? So Melissa did come and pick me up from, from the jail here and took me over to the local treatment facility, which used to be CORE. And, and what I can say about that is, is that I've spent, I spent 90 days in, in treatment, and, and as soon as I got out, right, like I got out with nothing, right? And, and I relayed that over to the probation department, and, and one of them came and picked me up and even took me shopping for like work clothes and, and just like personal clothes and work boots and all that stuff, right? So they really helped in, in literally all facets of my life, right? The attitude of Nevada County probation officers is unlike any that I've ever experienced in my life before, right? It's always been some type of, well, naturally, it is, but it didn't feel like a hierarchy, you know? It was, it was like, we know that you're going through something challenging in your life, whether it be, you know, mental illness or drug addiction or any of those things. And, and they really made me feel like they actually cared, right? And, and I even invited Melissa and Fred Viola and all them to my wedding when I married my wife, and, and for them to show up like that, even though I was off of probation at the time, it really, it really just reinforced that they actually do care. and the chief of police for Grass Valley, you know, Grass Valley and, and all of them, they just continuously showed support, even through hiccups and all that stuff, right? And, and it promoted me to, to have like an amazing life today, right? So, so today, like I own my own business. I'm a, I'm like an active member in Narcotics Anonymous, which they also help guide me to. I, I employ people in recovery and, and my life is, my life is really amazing, all due to these people back here. And, and I'm really, really grateful that, that I can come up here and share just a little tidbit of my experience with, with the department and how grateful I am to them. So I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Keith, thank you so much for sharing your story. And we need, we need people like you. We need people like you who get through it and then are such an inspiration for the next people who are going through what you went through. And thank you to the probation team for all you're doing to support everyone. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I just wanted to commend you on your, your courage to jump up and tell your story. It's just amazing. And then people that you come across in your recovery program can benefit from understanding that, you know, not too long ago I was here and now I've progressed to here. And also, it takes a lot for a probation community to invest in people. I think just the psychic energy that you must, it must take to, because you have people that come through the system that aren't as fortunate as you, that don't get it, that may, may relapse or may, I always forget, recidivism, yeah, that word, you know the word I'm talking about? They go back into the system and unfortunately, that's part of the game. But you just stick with the people that you know that you can help and you come to work and contribute at that level. And it's got to be a huge investment emotionally, you know, on your part to just keep believing in people and believing in people like you. And so job well done. I always enjoy this presentation every year and I always enjoy meeting people and clients of our probation department. So yeah, thank you so much. Keep up the great work.
Yes, thank you. One of the things I appreciate about your whole team is the compassion that you show in the community and, and really truly believing in the people that you're helping. A lot of people just give up on you and we do not do that here in Nevada County. We're very lucky to have your team of people. Also, the collaboration that you show with our other agencies in the community, whenever there's any sort of emergency or helping, you know, during, for food giveaways or for the homeless shelter during the wintertime, I know probation is always there helping. So thank you guys for going the extra mile and being part of the, the community that we've all created here in Nevada County. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Well, just not to go over what everyone else said, because it's amazing, thank you. I, you know, it's inspirational. I think if, when you're telling your story, somebody is hearing today and you're going to make a difference in their life. And I think that's so important. And you all too. I just, I do think what we have here is special. It's very different from the old days of probation. You guys are changing people's lives. And it's not always easy. Recidivism is real. And, but you don't give up. I think that's the other part of it. You know, you, you pick up the pieces and you start over again. Like you said, you had hiccups. That's part of life, is a hiccup, right? And that's what makes you stronger and you guys are so appreciated. And not just in this too, just like Lisa was just saying, like one time we were short, you guys were out walking the fairgrounds, keeping people safe. You know, we have snow begetting. You guys were out checking doors and checking people. And that's, it's the bigger picture of a team that you guys are on here. So really appreciate you all. And good luck to you. I'm glad you were there for two years and hopefully we'll see you back there doing this one of these days too, if that's your mission. So I love that, that you have the ability to grow in your, in your profession. So thanks for coming and sharing your insight.
Okay, we're going to open it for public comment and see if there's any callers.
There's no callers online right now.
Okay, we're going to close public comment. So fantastic presentation. I am going to ask for a motion and a second to adopt the resolution.
So moved.
Second. Bullock and Swarthout?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chair. District five?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District one?
Yes. Thank you so much. You've got your probation week.
All right, thank you.
Congrats. Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Would you like a photo? Since you're, yeah, sure, come on down. Who do we have left to take pictures? Carissa? Oh, yay! Lisa. All right. We are almost done today.
Is his name Keith?
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Am I your partner?
You are!
All right. Well done, everyone. All right, we, oh, we have left our announcements. What do you folks, you want to pass on them for?
I'll do that.
Okay, we'll do the announcements another day. We are-